I'd like to call the regular meeting at the Clearlake City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency, located here in City of Clearlake, City Hall Council Chambers, at 14050 Olympic Drive in Clearlake, California, 95422. Today is Thursday, March 24th, 2016, at a little after 6:00 PM, 6:03. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Council members. Councilmember Sabatier.
Here.
Councilmember Overton.
Here.
Councilmember Lustow.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortina Dixon.
Present.
Mayor Perdón.
Present. I see some, uh, someone I recognize out in the audience. Mr. Bennett, would you lead us in the pledge? Longtime employee.
Our pledge begins with the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We don't have a moment of silence or a invocation scheduled, but if you would rise. Do we have a pastor present? Excellent. And if you would please remember the victims of that pure attack.
Yes.
In your, thank you.
Father, we come before you today and ask for your guidance and wisdom for our city. Lord, we have many things that we want to do, but we just pray that you would provide guidance. We also pray for protection over our city council members as well as our fire, police, and the EMTs, and all the people who serve this city. And Lord, we pray for your peace and mercy among those people who have suffered in this tragedy. Or we pray comfort for their families and their friends. And we pray, Lord, that you would bring wisdom to those in our government, and, Lord, to work through whatever means, Lord, to bring those responsible to justice. And we come before you and thank you in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Folsom, are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, there's a couple. Uh, first of all, on the consent items, uh, item number eight, I'm gonna ask for that from consent, but to be presented. And then number fourteen, we're going to ask full and bump to the next. Which is the discussion on the front.
Very good, so we'll discuss that at our upcoming meeting.
So will eight become six under presentations?
Eight will become, uh, ten point five under the.
Did everybody catch that? Got it.
I've looked at the agenda and the ending.
Second. Have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-negotiables? Is this my favorite part of the meeting? I believe it is. Oh, we do need to have a report on the closed session. If you would, Madam Attorney.
There was no reportable action.
Thank you. It's time for presentation. Someone who means a lot to us, who's given a lot of his time. Bill Perkins, if you'd join me here at the podium. Bill has served in many capacities, but in this particular, uh, moment, I'd like to thank him for all the time he spent as one of our planning commissioners. Uh, both planning commission and Parks and Rec, and it kinda went away and then it came back. And I asked the Vice Mayor to join me because she served with, with Bill, uh, on the planning commission for several years. Um, I'd also like to recognize his bride for all the hours that, um, she, uh, sat at home alone because she, uh, he was here at the meeting. And for all the hours and hours of material, things that you have to pour through, and site visits and things, that you're an active planning commissioner. Uh, and it just, your service to the city, uh, has been definitely noticed. And your absence will definitely be noticed as well. Um, I hope through our vetting process, we can find someone as good as you to fill your vacancy. And I thank you very, very much for your service. And, uh, Madam Vice, do you have anything to say you'd like to share?
I do, I'd just like to say that serving with you was an honor on the planning commission. Um, I walked into a situation where there were four men serving on the planning commission, and they selected me, the council at the time selected me, to break up that sort of paradigm that was happening. And you made the transition so easy and so comfortable. And you and the other members were such terrific mentors to me. But I really, um, I, I believe that part of where I am now is due to that mentorship from you. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. I do see another dignitary I'd like to recognize in the back. Someone who's been our chair of the planning commission for a number of years. Mr. Webb, would you like to join us up here? Is there anything you'd like to say to Commissioner Perkins upon his last public?
I can probably say it from here.
Okay, sir.
It's been an absolute joy to serve with Bill. He has brought wisdom and knowledge, experience, planning mission. Many times, he came up with ideas that nobody else had thought of, to help make the city a better place to be. And, Bill, we're gonna really miss you. We're sorry that you've taken, uh, decided finally to retire from our, which we have appreciated.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your comments. Um, it's time for a photo, if you'd like to join us.
Together.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, any parting comments?
Been a pleasure working with everybody in the city. It's been, gone through a few administrators. Over the years, and it's been a pleasure, and it's been a lot of fun.
Well, we thank you very, very much. And, uh, again, is it okay if I still call when we ask questions? Nice, kinda pulling that experience, thanks again, Bill. Couple other things, very important. Presentations. I didn't tell him I was gonna do this, but Lieutenant Sully, would you please join me up here? Don't get that curious, sir.
As a peace officer, one of the most difficult things, one of the most difficult calls for service, I think, uh, anyone can respond to. Uh, and you, you shudder when you hear the call come out, is a child abuse or a child sexual assault call. Um, yeah, that is one of the most important calls that any peace officer could ever respond to. The opportunity to maybe change that, that person's life. Uh, the opportunity to take them out of an environment that's abusive, possibly neglectful. It, it changes their life. I had the pleasure and privilege to serve for three years in that capacity, and still have young people, now adults, um, who come up and thank you for changing their life, for getting them out of that environment. And I see some heads nodding from people who know, know what that's like. Um, there's just nothing else that I can, I can compare to. Um, there are some really special people that work at the Clearlake Police Department, that work at Lake County Sheriff's Office and our Lake County District Attorney's Office, um, who work with these cases. And I'm telling you folks, the caseload is overwhelming at times. Um, I had the pleasure of serving with Detective Rod Dewey, who's since retired from the Clearlake Police Department, an outstanding investigator, and someone I know who changed a lot of lives here in the city of Clearlake. So with that said, I would like to acknowledge and recognize that April 2016 is Child Abuse Prevention Month. If you know of, are familiar of, hear, hear of children that are being abused, please, it is our responsibility as citizens and members of this community to report those to law enforcement. And, and I know the lieutenant is right on top on wanting to get, get out there and help these folks. So if you will, bear with me as I read through this. Whereas approximately 3 million children were reported abused and neglected in the United States each year. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community problem, and finding solutions depends on the environment and involvement of people throughout the community. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas local initiatives to prevent child abuse include the Snuggle Nest Project, nurturing parent program, differential response, infant massage, mother's wise or family home visitation programs, and trauma-informed care workshops and education. Whereas all citizens should be, become more aware of the effects of child abuse and its prevention, and more supportive of parents raising their children in a safe and nurturing environment. Now, therefore, the city council in City of Clearlake does hereby proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And Clearlake calls upon its citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the community in which we live. Date of this day, 24th of March, 2016. Signed by me. Is there someone here from the Child Abuse Council? I have some folks here from First Five, would you guys like to say something? I'm sorry I didn't call you up sooner. Sometimes I get a little caught up in the moment. Oh, no, you do a good job, Julie.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone who takes part in preventing child abuse in our community, um, and strengthening families, and making live, children's lives better. Um, and also, April 9th, from 10:00 to 3:00, in Lower Lake, we'll have our annual Children's Festival. This is the only, only the second time it's been on the South Shore. So please come out, bring children, your grandchildren, and participate in the fun.
Where in Lower Lake?
At the, at the park, the Russell Rustinkey.
Memorial Park.
Adrian, you'd like to share?
No, I'm pretty far.
Well, thank you very much, thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation this morning. Also, First Five, um, just doing a lot of great things for our county through our Office of Education. Very welcome, thank you. Ulmas. Is there someone here, I'll try to do this right this time, um, that would like to join me, um, as we recognize sexual assault and sexual assault awareness. It kinda worked pretty good at the last time. There you go, surround us. You know, same thing. We really need to very be aware that we have people that, um, need our help, that need intervention, that because of frailties, um, they find themselves victims. Um, because of the whole dynamic of how rapes are committed, it's, it's awful. And oftentimes, people sit in silence because they're so afraid to come forward. But, um, there are great people here, there are great programs here in Lake County. And, uh, these are just a handful of the folks that are involved with those programs that can get you help. If you know of someone, it's so imperative to get involved to stop that cycle. And again, I wanna thank you all for being involved, and, uh, thank all the brave people who work for the Clearlake Police Department, our EA's office, and local law enforcement. Um, so with that said, proclamation from the City of Clearlake designated the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas in 2016, Lake County Agencies, pardon me, 2015, the Lake County Agencies responded to the needs of at least 227 sexual assault victims and their significant others and family members. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own. And, and the partnership between the public and private Lake County Agencies is invaluable. And whereas child sexual assault prevention must be the priority to confront reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience sexual assault before the age of 18. Those are staggering statistics. Whereas Lake County Family Resource Center has been instrumental in leading the way in Lake County and addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services, continuing support, and it is seen as an accomplishment, uh, I'm sorry, accompaniment to victims and survivors and their significant others. And whereas ending sexual assault in Lake County must include active public and private efforts to speak out against sexual violence. And it is time for all of us to start conversations, to take appropriate action, and to support one another to create safer environments for all residents. Whereas staff and volunteers at the Lake County Resource Center, Rape Crisis Center, work year-round to encourage every person to speak out against sexual violence and to support survivors by providing prevention education and survivor empowerment information. Whereas Lake County Family Resource Center and the District Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Division, local law enforcement agencies, hospitals, and schools have set up an important example of how foregoing collaborative relationships improve the quality and service for those impacted by sexual violence. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed, the City Council for the City of Clearlake does hereby designate the month of April 2016 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Clearlake. April 5th as Sexual Assault Awareness Day in actual Clearlake, and urges all local Lake County schools, businesses, and community members to participate and sponsor events this month to increase awareness and public support for creating communities free of violence and exploitation. Thank you very much.
A little something, um, you know, sexual assault does not discriminate. It doesn't matter your age, your gender, or what ethnicity you are. Any of us, any one of us could be sexually assaulted at any time. And it's never the victim's fault. So on behalf of Lake Family Resource Center, I would like to thank, um, the City of Clearlake and the community for helping end sexual violence and bringing awareness to our community. Thank you.
Thank you all for.
In the past, there have been ribbon-shaped window planes in the corresponding colors. Do you guys happen to still have those?
Come on up.
If you do, we would love for you to drop them off here so that we can display those during the month.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. I hope I'm not doing this. Mr. Folsom. I was. She's got work to do.
Okay. Just Brian here. Just to give you a, um, introduction, this is the presentation of the Lake County Economic Profile Report. The Economic Profile Report for Lake County is a new report with the latest demographic, employment, and educational data on Lake County. The report is sponsored by the Lake County Regional Economic Development Committee and the Sonoma County Economic Development Board. The Regional Economic Development Committee is cooperative, cooperative effort between the County of Lake and the cities of Clearlake and Lakeport, and various other local entities that are working together to improve economic and business vitality in our area. We've asked the report's principal author, Brian Marlin, to give you a brief presentation on the report and answer any questions you may have. Brian is a graduate of Middlebury College in Vermont with a degree in international politics and economics. He has a background in economic development, working with the Dorchester Bay Economic Development Corporation in Boston, and currently as research project coordinator with the Sonoma County Economic Development Board. In fact, without the generous cooperation of the Sonoma Economic Development Board, this report would never have happened. My dinner is Brian.
Great, so I'm here today, came over the mountain from, uh, Santa Rosa, and just wanna give you a pretty, um, overview of the report that we put together with the cooperation of the Lake County Regional Economic Development Committee. And so I'll just try and be brief, but, um, we had a copy of the report in full, and feel free to ask any questions. So we have a pretty extensive program down in Sonoma County, and, uh, this report was in collaboration, just kind of, um, following off of that to get a snapshot of what the economic outlook was for Lake County. Um, so as you can see, population has been steadily growing, around 2.2%. Currently, 66,000 people. And by 2020, there's projected to be around 68,000 people in Lake County. And if you see the graph on the left, uh, the population is aging. So the 65-plus category is rapidly increasing, while the others are, they're staying level or decreasing. And then demographically, the Hispanic population has been increasing incrementally from around 15% to around 20% by 2020. Um, and also, if you note, the, um, Hispanic population is significantly younger, so it counts for approximately 32% of school district enrollment, which is, you know, hard to see what's presented on the screen. Overall, education, um, is, is pretty good. There's 86% of residents with a high school diploma or higher at age 25. And so with a graduation rate of 80%, that's shows that another 6% are either going back to school or getting their GED between dropping out of high school and reaching age 25. As you see in the graph on the right, the graduation rate in Lake County has dropped over the past two years, but it is just reaching the California average. And so it's been pretty much on par, more above the California average for dropout rate. The median household income was 37,000 in 2015, and is projected to rise a pretty significant amount, 15%, to 42,500 by 2020. Um, and so you can see a, a drop between 2010 to 2015 with the impacts of the recession and then coming back up and reaching a new peak of 42,000, approximately 500 by 2020. Included in this, it's not just the higher-income tiers getting wealthier and wealthier. Um, all of the income tiers below 35,000 are decreasing significantly. So the lighter, um, bars are 2,000, and then going to 2015, the darkest bars, 2020. So you can see that on the left side of the graph, all the lower-income tiers will be decreasing, and, um, you'll have a lot more households moving into middle and upper-income tiers in the next year. Correspondingly, the unemployment rate has been dropping. It was currently in February, 7.4% in Lake County on average, um, 11.5% in Clearlake. And if you notice, the unemployment rate in Lake County has been getting a lot closer to the California average. In 2011, Lake County was 51 out of 58 counties, so pretty close to the bottom with a very high unemployment rate. But it's been recovering a lot faster, and it's now right in the middle, 32 out of 58 counties in California, and pretty close to the California average unemployment rate. And historically, Clearlake has always had about double the unemployment rate of Lakeport. So although it looks higher, it's come down from around 20% five years ago. And a part of that could be due to geographic reasons, closeness to, you know, jobs in urban centers over in Mendocino County, et cetera. It's a pretty broad industry base, and it's a little hard to read, but services account for about 50% of the jobs in Lake County, and then retail trade and construction. Overall, it's a pretty diverse, um, group of jobs. One sector that's higher is the agriculture and mining, definitely plays a big role in the county. And then these are projections going through, um, 2022. The largest industries that will grow are professional and business services, construction, transportation, warehouse utilities, and leisure and hospitality. And, you know, one of the problems we have with data is it's always historical. We're always waiting a few months or even years to get the data from the state or federal level. So with something hugely at the Valley of Fire, it's really hard to measure the impacts of that right away, and it'll take a while for it to really understand exactly what the impacts on the economy will be. But one thing we know is that construction, for sure, will see a large increase and be one of the fastest-growing industries as the rebuilding takes place. So there's definitely gonna be a lot of jobs in that industry. And now, this is showing, um, the growth of wineries. The bottom line is wineries in Lake County, and the top line are wineries in Napa County. And so although there's quite a few less wineries in Lake County, it can be a very successful economic driver, promoting both manufacturing jobs for producing the wine, agriculture, and leisure and tourism. And so over the next, I believe, 10 years, the Lake County wine industry is projected to grow around 16%. And as we've seen in neighboring counties, Sonoma and Napa are great examples. It can be a great industry to promote economic growth as a whole. The median home prices have been increasing from their low in 2011 and are currently around, um, 200,000, which is still half of the California average median home price, which was 440,000 in 2015. Including, you know, the home prices are going up, and also, the real estate market is doing a lot better. As you can see, this year, or last year, 871 houses were sold, which is much higher than in 2009, the low was lower than 300 houses. And this number is continuing to increase as the homes are regaining their values and people are able to sell them. We're seeing a lot less foreclosures, and overall, the real estate market is a lot healthier. Similarly, the taxable sales have been rebounding. Unfortunately, we got this data from the State Board of Legalization, the latest numbers for 2013. So at this point, it's safe to estimate that Lake County has, um, surpassed its peak of 2007 taxable sales. So this is, you know, means more revenues, more consumer confidence. People are out there spending, and, um, overall, it's a good sign for the economy. This is just a quick breakdown of consumer spending. So about, um, 29% of Lake County households, um, 29% of the housing, uh, is spent on housing. And then, um, 16% on transportation and 12% on food. And this is pretty close to the national average, so there's not really any outliers here. Lake County households generally spend in line with the national trends. And, uh, just some things to think about, especially in seeing down in Sonoma County. The sharing economy is becoming huge, uh, vacation rentals with Airbnb, ride-sharing with Uber and Lyft. As more broadband wireless spreads, technology is spreading, and just creating so many new spaces for economic activity that did not exist before, especially in more rural places. As, you know, the broadband and satellite coverage increases, it's gonna be a huge thing in the next coming decades. So some of the examples of that are maker movement, making things with 3D printers, where you kind of be your own little manufacturer. You can, you know, they're implementing it in high schools and libraries where, you know, young kids are able to be designing things and making things. And then just some other things that are coming up is craft everything and go local. We've seen that in Sonoma County and in Northern California as a whole, been a very large movement, a move to kind of look for local food sources, shop at local businesses, and keep things within the community. And lastly, uh, this year, there was the commercial law passed on cannabis, creating a whole state bureaucracy, basically, for regulating medical marijuana and hopefully, um, mitigating impacts of potential legalization in 2016, getting something in place to start thinking about what those impacts will be, both economic, social, um, and for, you know, basically every aspect for the community, especially in Northern California, we've seen it over in Sonoma County. It's already a pretty large industry, just the medical marijuana. And so kind of studying how that is gonna be affecting both the economy, industrial, commercial space, um, and health and society in general in the future is one big thing that we can look at. So any questions? So any questions?
I see none here. Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay, we're all out of our places. Opening up for public comment. We have a request to speak for Mr. Bill Shields, speaking on homelessness and fires. Mr. Shields?
Bill.
Opening up for public comment. Public comment is a time when the public is welcome to speak for up to three minutes. Unfortunately, we can't respond. Most we can do is just direct to a city staff member if there's something that we can help with later. Thank you. All right, Mr. Shields, we're here.
Good evening. Now, I think the homeless are getting a bummed rap. They're being accused of all kinds of stuff, tires, juvenile. Now, some of those homeless are not homeless because they want to be homeless. They have been driven out from other areas. Now, they roam around day and night. In one area, one of them was awarded over $100,000 for helping law enforcement. Now, these people are just like an old dog wandering around looking and sniffing. And when they blame some of the veterans of these fires and stuff, they might be shell-shocked from a war. They might be mental. And I think they're getting a bummed rap. Thank you.
Thank you. They don't have any other comment cards. Is it, would anyone else like to address the council with public comment? Seeing that, I'll bring it back. To our consent agenda. Any items to be pulled? No. Would anyone from the public like to pull an item that's on the consent agenda for discussion? I see no response. Your motion.
I'd like to move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. Minus 0.8 for, now second that.
A motion is second. Man of clerk.
Councilmember Sabatier.
Aye.
Councilmember Overton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lustvile.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon.
Aye.
Mayor Firdan.
Aye.
Moving on to item 10, public hearing. To consider the adoption of ordinance number 185-2016, granting a franchise to Golden State Water Company. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Chris Bettinell, our finance director of the Land Department.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Back on February 25th, you adopted a resolution intention to grant a franchise to Golden State Water Company, which resolution specified calling having a public hearing this evening and publishing it in the paper and also indicating to the public what you were considering tonight. The franchise, Golden State Water Company has had a franchise in Clear Lake since before the city was incorporated in 1980, and the franchise will continue on. This modification to the franchise will basically allow for the payment of a franchise fee from Golden State Water Company to the city of Clear Lake, which is specified to be 2 percent of the gross annual receipts of Golden State Water Company from use operation of city facilities, but not less than 1 percent of Golden State's gross annual receipts from sale of water within the city. Other than that, the franchise agreement remains substantially unchanged. It is, it does have a five-year term with a five-year renewal at the city's discretion. And no later than 60 days after the passage of this ordinance, the grantee, which would be Golden State Water, shall file with the city, correct, or written acceptance of the franchise, and then it goes into effect. That's essentially the substance of that, so I would ask that the council conduct the public hearing and then move to adopt the ordinance 185-260. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And there is a representative from Golden State Water here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bettinell. Any questions from council at this point? Seeing that, I'll open it up for public hearing. Anyone from the public like to address this issue? Come up to the podium.
My question is, what happens if these people known as the city council do not agree to this franchise?
Mr. Bettinell?
Well, the existing franchise would remain in effect and the city would then not receive the 2 percent franchise fee.
Then what would happen to Golden State? Would they keep it versus marking up their water rates 2 percent because their water rates are already too high?
Well, we don't set the water rates for Golden State.
I know.
Water District. And I certainly can't speak to what they're planning on doing to their, with their water So if the council chooses not to adopt this, then the current franchise would remain in effect and staff would have to consider what to do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bettinell.
Can I continue? Okay. What areas does Golden State take in? Because I know of...
Would you like a representative to explain that if you want?
Because I know of three areas that other water companies take in. So, and I know that Golden State is in the park, but other than that...
Yeah. Thank you, Will. See if they can answer that question for us. Yes, please, come on up, sir. Introduce yourself.
Hello. I'm Keith Aart, the operations superintendent for Golden State Water Company here in Lakeport.
Mr. Aart.
Thank you. Our water system essentially begins behind Futz, et cetera, in a track. There borders Davis and Old 53 is very thin through the middle of the city. We do have two other water companies bordering us and those in that area. Once we get to essentially here, the rest of the park is ours, long and narrow, out to, just before, wouldn't you plow a point?
Okay. So that Crestview intersection in Lake Shore?
Yeah, yeah, just, just past there, Silverado Beach, that'll just be on there.
Thank you very much. Is there anything you would like to share with us tonight, update this on this consideration?
No, I don't have anything else to add. I think Chris did a good job explaining the situation.
Thank you very much.
And if I can have you stay for one more question?
Yes.
So the, one of the questions from the constituent here was the potential increase. Is there any CPUC laws that prohibit you from increasing based on a franchise fee?
They don't prohibit us. That, my, this, this is my boss, this is Paul Schubert.
You're one of the bosses?
Hi.
This is Paul Schubert, Golden State Water Company General Manager.
Thank you. No, there's no law to prohibit us from including that in our future rates. The way the rates are set to the California Public and Public Commission is all of our revenue requirements are looked at, how much water you sell, and puts a good price on that. When we filed a rate case back in 2014, and we're still waiting for the policy decision to come out, it should be some out this year. We won't file another one that will have rates set back till 2019. So anything that happens between now and 2019 will have no impact on us.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other questions for this? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other member of the public wanting to speak on this topic? Seeing that, I'll bring you back to council.
I can have, I can have.
All right, Mr. Shields, come on up. Somebody from left just here.
No, that's for the power.
That's for the power.
What's a franchise ordinance? What's it all about for Golden State?
I could probably put you the definition of Mr. Bettinell, would you give us your spin?
Well, basically, a franchise ordinance is a fancy term where the city enters into a contract with an agency that it has a franchise with. So rather than adopting it via a reservation process, it does it through an ordinance process, and that's defined by California law, it's essentially a contract.
Now, does Golden State have to pay the city anything to be here?
Yes, that's, that's what this agreement is all about, that's the 2 percent.
Now, what's going to happen from this? My rate's going to go up, other people's rates are going to go up. Now, you know and I know that the city needs money, but why does the city want to put a hardship on me?
Well, Bill, I think the representative from Golden State just said that anything that was done between now and 2019, and correct me if I'm wrong, that that would not impact the rates.
Well, Golden State has the highest rates in the city of Clear Lake as it is. Now, look at the sun. People cannot even take a bath for two or three days. Now, other people being penalized for water. It doesn't make sense.
If, if I may respond, or should I wait until the public comment is over?
We'll get it.
I'll, I'll respond later.
I mean, here in the city of Clear Lake, you have three water companies. Now, what on, what on all three of them combine and give the citizen a decent rate? You cannot even afford to have a garden, a lawn, you cannot even landscape your own property here in Clear Lake unless you're a mayor.
Any other comments from the public on this matter? Seeing that, I'll bring you back. Councilmember Sabatier?
Mathematically, it makes no sense to increase the rates if they're paying a percentage. It's not like they're paying a flat fee, they're paying a percentage, so any increase in the rates would increase the amount they have to pay to the city. And so whatever they increase on a specific usage fee would only take away that money back from them in the long run. So it makes no sense for them to have that increase. An increase for other reasons outside of this franchise fee, that's something they could do, but it doesn't make any sense when looking at the percentage and the fees that that would include an increase for them.
And I need to bring it back from public comment or closed by a comment, and I apologize for not following that format. So I have a motion to close.
I have a motion to close public comment?
I have a second.
Second public hearing, actually.
I have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Being unanimous. Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon had a comment? I apologize. Councilmember Sabatier?
Yeah, just making sure that we have everything that's on this report. I'm looking at section two, grant franchise. There's an empty letter A. Is that just a typo issue or is there something actually missing?
Page number?
Uh, looks like I'm actually page three.
You're correct, that was a blank, okay. Section...
And just for making the document look correct, also section four goes ABBC. And so if we can get that fixed as well, the rest looks good to me.
Councilmember Sabatier? Councilmember Murler?
I'd like to ask a tricky question. This is my water company. Do I need to rephrase my sentence?
No, we, Ryan and Ed talked with us before about that, and this is something that affects everybody in general, it's not used to the city.
I didn't take someone's account.
Anyone else from council? Have an action. Scroll.
I would like to move to adopt, recommend adoption of the ordinance in the city of Clear Lake, granting to Golden State Water Company, a California corporation, a franchise to construct, maintain, and use pipes and opportunities necessary or proper for transmitting water under, along, across, or upon the public streets within the city of Clear Lake. Ordinance number 185-2016 with noted corrections, which House Member Sabatier.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, we'll call both.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Lustvile?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
And Mayor Firdan?
Aye.
I'll bring up item 10.5. Mr. Olson, could you introduce that?
Thank you, sir.
Formerly known as eight.
Yes. Lake County had asked for some minor modifications to the existing PEG contract, essentially to throw in some specific dates. One of those specific dates was for a presentation by PEG to be made to the city council prior to April, so we've asked Ed Robey, Mr. Ed Robey, to be here to give a short presentation about what PEG's been doing. Thank you, Mr. Robey.
Mr. Robey?
If you would. I would. You know, the PEG station started here in the city of Clear Lake and then after a number of years, the county joined in. And this new agreement that we're making a modest change to, to make it a little more specific, this agreement includes the city of Lakeport, so now all three government entities are involved in the PEG station. Hopefully we'll grow to be a county-wide institution that we can all be proud of. Anyway, in order to comply with the, I got to tell you, I always feel at home when I'm You know how this little amendment came up? I called the county because in the new agreement, the county's contribution to the PEG station's operating budget tripled from 5,000 a year to 15,000 a year. And I called up and said, hey, when can I get the money?
One of those specific dates was for a presentation by PEG to be made to the city council prior to April. So we've asked Ed Robey, Mr. Ed Robey, to be here to give a short presentation about what PEG's been doing. Thank you, Mr. Robey. Thank you.
Mr. Robey?
If you would. I would. Yeah, thank you. You know, the PEG station started here in the city of Clear Lake, and then after a number of years, the county joined in. And this new agreement that we're making modest change to, make it a little more specific. This agreement includes the city of Lakeport, so now all three government entities are involved in the PEG station. Hopefully, we'll grow to be a countywide institution that we can all be proud of. Anyway, in order to comply with the, I got to tell you. I always feel at home when I'm here. You know how this little amendment came up? I called the county because in the new agreement, the county's contribution to the PEG station's operating budget tripled from $5,000 a year to $15,000 a year. And I called up and said, hey, when can I get the money for PEG? And they said, well, you're supposed to give this report sometime, but it doesn't say when. And I said, tell you what, if I come up and give you the report, will you give me a check? And that's exactly what happened. I gave this report Tuesday, and when I was finished, Matt Perry stood up and handed me a check for $15,000, which I brought to the city and now in PEG coffers. Yeah. Part of the city's, the city doesn't contribute cash, you know, the city contributes in kind by doing things like managing, accounting for us, providing space and so forth. And that also increases a little bit. We took a look at the actual subscribers countywide and determined a proportional share. And that's why the counties are up so much, because they have the largest number of subscribers. Anyway, okay, so as required by the newly amended PEG agreement, I am hereby going to get a report. Add us on the county PEG TV, and you should be getting this report every year from now on. I've given a written, signed copy to the city clerk. The county PEG TV is doing well. Now, I could probably just stop there and say, there's my report, but no. We have a solid board of directors, really good board, who are actively moving to build the county PEG TV's infrastructure and its connection to the community. In February, the PEG board approved a 2016, 2017 budget totaling $92,000. Comprised of a $27,000 operating budget and a $65,000 capital budget. And submitted it to the three government entities as required in 6.8, section 6.8 of the agreement. This is a big deal because the PEG station has been limping along practically no money at all for years. And you may or may not know this, but we just went through a process with the county whereby, similar to this 2% franchise agreement you just approved, the county and the two cities approved a 1% fee on MediaCom's gross revenues. And that fee goes to the PEG station, but it's restricted funds. It can only be used for capital costs, for purchasing equipment and so forth. In February, the PEG board hired Beth Karmann as interim station manager. She's been doing it. And now she's getting a small amount of money for that. At our march meeting, we hired John Jensen as a consultant to help us with the purchase and installation of cameras and other related equipment for the two city council chambers, which is our first major project using this capital funding, which has begun to come in. To date, we've received over $14,000 from the past, but it's, that's what we call it. But I called, I contacted MediaCom yesterday, and they say that the fourth quarter of 2015 should come in next week. So we are, we're poised to set up your council chambers, pretty much like the board of supervisors' chambers, and the Lakeport City Council chambers too. I've met with staff at the Lulun Community College of Clear Lake. This is a small, Bruno's the staff. And begun the process of establishing a studio and classroom at the Clear Lake campus. And begun work upon a cooperative agreement whereby the, Bruno gave me a draft of the cooperative agreement. Whereby the college would provide the space and instructor at Lake County PEG TV would provide equipment, which we can purchase with this capital. Now, there's been a bit of a snag because the conversion from Uva College to Lulun College has slowed the process down, but I'm confident we'll get through it sooner or later. I've never, city manager Greg Poulsen, and we're talking about getting the use of the room out of the senior center where the PEG station was located years ago. To use as a classroom and studio space. So we will have something going even if this college project drags on for who knows how long. I don't want to wait. We're looking ahead to our next big project, which is getting the equipment needed to allow PEG TV to begin streaming programming on the internet. Everybody knows that cable TV is slowly going away and TV broadcasts will be on the internet. Now, this is a slight problem for us because the 1% that we're getting is for capital equipment is based on cable franchise fees. And so as the cable usage goes down, so will our revenues. So it's really important for us to buy what we need for the future as soon as possible and get it installed. Anyway, hopefully by next time you get this report, next year, it'll be up on the internet and thinking about what's next. That's my report. Are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Robey?
I don't really have any questions, but I'd like to commend Mr. Robey on his continued chairmanship and activeness. He could have retired a long time ago, and I know he really wants to, but his heart is in this 100%, and he saw this, he saw this through the end. I think we stood in front of the board supervisors two times, three times, a couple times, and just where he was very, very active at making sure we got this money while this money was still available before the cable dissipates like it's probably going to. So thank you for that.
Well, you can also thank Jeff Smith, he's sitting in the back there, who's the one that twisted my arm to take his place as the county representative on the PEG board.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome to come on any time.
Okay. I have a question for you, Mr. Robey.
Yes, sir.
This pass through is through MediaCom, correct?
Correct.
MediaCom sells internet. There's no correlation where the pass through can keep going even if it's just internet and less cable?
Well, you put your finger right on one of the key things that I've been talking with the county staff about in particular, which is that when they, whenever they get involved in negotiations with MediaCom, instead of talking about cable, they need to talk about video broadcasting in a more general sense, so that it could include internet broadcast. Now, MediaCom doesn't have an objection to PEG broadcasting on the internet because they sell internet service, so they're happy with that. Cable channels in general don't like PEG stations. The federal laws say that they have to provide a channel, and they don't like that because they could sell that channel to a commercial broadcaster. So they'll be happy to think, I think it'll be a win-win for everybody who wants to move to the internet. The real key is to keep the revenue stream alive.
One more question, sir. Should that revenue stream dissipate as you expect? Is there any restrictions from advertising on our PEG channel that might generate revenue?
The way the California, California has a law called DIFCA, and it's very specific that PEG channels are not commercial channels. However, they can have underwriters, just like Channel 9 in San Francisco Public Broadcasting. They can have, we could run commercials for the PEG station to encourage membership. And that's one of the things we're looking at, is if we're going to provide internet services, that we would provide extra services to members that paid a modest fee each year. Everybody could watch this, you know, the general broadcast, but there's, we have a library of shows and a whole bunch of other things. We're still trying to work through how that would, how that would work, but that's one of the things we're looking at.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, it's a good question.
Any other questions from council? Seeing that, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public wanting to comment about our PEG presentation?
My question is, with my understanding, when we got into this agreement with MediaCom and we, the customers of MediaCom was charged 2%? 1%, 2%, 3%? Who cares? The bottom line here is, there was not supposed to be any employees. Now, as Ed Robey just said, he has a consultant, and he has a manager back there. And from my understanding, there's not supposed to be any paid employees. That that money was only supposed to go to...
I'll answer your question.
He's going to answer you, come on up here, Ed.
See, here's the thing.
I'm losing control. That's okay.
The 1% pass through can only be spent on equipment and other capital costs. It can't be spent on personnel, whether they're a consultant, which is, he's not an employee, he's going to help us set up, buy and set up the cameras, and then he's done. That is, but that money isn't coming out of the 1%.
What's it coming out of?
The $15,000 that I just got from the county.
All right.
That's called the operating budget. The other is the capital budget. They're two separate things, and the operating budget doesn't have strings attached to it, the capital budget does.
Okay, so would you run out of money in your capital budget? You're going to hide, you're going to fire these people?
You don't understand, the capital budget is for equipment. We're not paying them out of the capital budget.
Okay, what budget are you paying them out of?
The operating budget.
Okay, your operating budget. Will you run out? You're going to fire these people?
We're not going to run out.
Oh, that's a good question.
Any other questions?
Good to the order.
I'll probably just learn for free.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Robey, addressing that question, I appreciate it.
If you'd like to go over the math with me, I would be happy to do so.
Perhaps in the lobby. Any other questions for council? Any comments on this item? Seeing that I'll bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion?
You please would.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to, just let me go back to number six, favor eight, to approve the First Amendment to the Public Educational Governmental Cable Television Channel Agreement between the city of Clear Lake, city of Lakeport, and the county of Lake.
I'll second.
No motion in a second. Federal call both.
Councilmember Sabatier?
Aye.
Councilmember Liz Delo?
Aye.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
And Mayor Bruno?
Aye. The passage, thank you very much. Item number 11, moving on to business.
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with the appointment of a planning commissioner. And I think I'll give this presentation since Melissa's voice seems to be getting out a little bit. In the, in February, as we mentioned earlier, giving Bill Perkins the proper, Bill Perkins gave notice of his resignations for the planning commission, and on February 15th, on March 15th, he resigned his seat on the planning commission. We've gone through, we've created an appointment policy, we have an ad hoc committee that created it. The ad hoc committee, the city had advertised for planning commissioner applicants. The ad hoc committee reviewed those applications, and there are two applicants that have been referred to the city council for consideration for appointments. Those two applicants are Mr. Russell Kramer and Mr. Peter Shandera. You have a set of questions in front of you. Are Mr. Shandera and Mr. Russell Kramer are both here? So in the past, I guess you've interviewed them individually, asked the other one to step outside, is that the way you'd like to proceed on this?
Well, before we begin, I need to recuse myself. I've served as a director with Mr. Kramer and then other boards and other service clubs. From that relationship, I simply need to refuse myself, and I would step out. So I have asked Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon to administer opening this hearing. Thank you very much.
Okay, so does anyone have a preference for continuing practice as, as it has been going in the past?
I, yeah, I think that's all that would be real change, to be fair.
Are you saying one at a time?
One at a time, the other steps out, one stays in.
We're not privy to the questions.
When we do that, when we do the next interview, the other person has to step out.
I don't want to do it in that way.
And having been a member of the ad hoc committee, based on the new format for appointing planning commissioners and other committee members, we decided that we would pass through because there were so few applicants, that we would pass both of them through to the council here to give them both the opportunity to present to the council. I did have another question that I had suggested, was that one vetoed or?
No, it was consolidated in both of those.
Okay.
So the last one.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. All right. So shall we each ask one question, which would have worked?
I'm perfectly fine if you ask one. They're all the same.
Take over the side.
No.
Okay.
So we need to, who are we going to do?
Yeah, I think so. If the two of you gentlemen want to step out, then we'll call one of you in in just a second.
I'm going to put you guys in the meeting room out there, so I'll be right out there in a second.
All right, give me a number from one to 10. Okay, what do you got? I just picked a number, and I thought we'd just YouTube to them. I was like, okay. I'd like to take a two-minute break at this point. Little puncture will go fine. Is that Anne?
Oh, you're late.
All right, back in session. Prior to the, prior to the break, we did a number draw to determine who would go first, and that will be Mr. Kramer.
All right.
Can I ask you all the questions?
Yes.
I'm going to get the intonation of the three questions. Good evening, and thanks for being here. Appreciate your interest. I have a series of questions I'll ask you, will give you the opportunity to answer each of those questions. If you need me to repeat or clarify, let me know. I will begin with question one. Tell us about your qualifications and why you would be a good choice for planning commission- Tell us about your qualifications and why you would be a good choice for planning commissioner.
Okay, well, as indicated on my resume that I gave to each of you, my background is in forty years of appraisal of real estate. I'm American, also as an independent appraiser. Coupled with selling of real estate, managing real estate. The appraisal especially includes a lot of land use, renting, determining highest and best use. And all of those things go to the planning process. You have to understand the planning process to do that job. As far as why I wanna do it, do you want me to answer that question, or just the qualifications at this point?
You may continue.
Pardon me?
You may continue.
Will I get a whole, a whole five-minute stump?
You're not limited to three minutes.
I don't have that long. As far as the qualifications, I think my long time being an appraiser and being involved in real estate, and knowing this problem, this area, I was, I'm a fourth-generation county resident, born and raised here. My family is quite analogous to mine. I'm gonna have to jump over that a little bit. But, when I, when I came back in 2002, I felt a need to give something back to this community that I grew up in. My family's had a long history of community service, starting with my grand-grandfather, who was a supervisor back in, according to an article this morning, in 1902 to 1912. Needless to say, I didn't know him. I also had a cousin and superintendent of schools for Lake County. Had a cousin that was a long-term fire chief here, Don Parker, the Lake Shore Fire Department. My uncle was a fire chief in Lower Lake and later of Mission, Triple Lake Volunteer Department. My grandmother was on the school board of Lower Lake Union High School. My father was a member of the Lake County Care Board. So, I know the area. I knew when I grew up here in the 1950s and 1960s, there was a spirit here that was tremendous. And I was speaking to Mr. Bennett before the meeting started, and we were reminiscing about that. Clear Lake was a place to be, Clear Lake Highlands was a place to come to, a place to be in all of Lake County. I'd like to get that, I think that we're making strides. I'd like to get that spirit back to what it was for the city of Clear Lake. And I think I can help to do that by serving on the planning commission. Viceroy, my personal service to Clear Lake and the community started when I returned in 2002. I became founding member of the Lower Lake High School Football Fundraising, which is, we call, refer to as LUSLA. We raised funds initially from Lower Lake High School Football, and then we expanded that to all sports in the high school, plus a few other non-sport things, like the C-Nash program and the volleyball. At that time, in that process, I saw a need for a softball field at Lower Lake High School. Led to an effort, I led that effort, to get that softball field built, including spending time and providing equipment for the cultivation of the field, the trenching for the irrigation system. At that time, Kurt Gian Bruno, your former councilperson, asked me if I could help to prepare the community garden at the senior center. Again, I provided that equipment for cultivation to do the initial preparation of that field and my treasurer to trench the irrigation lines and put them in. I'm a director now in the Lake County Fire Protection District. I'm on the boards with Lower Lake, commanding the action group, and served on their scholarship. I'm a member of the Clear Lake Coalition. I'm on the board and treasurer of the Clear Lake Rotary Club. In Rotary, I've helped with several things, the safe house, annual Christmas dinner, the dictionary project, and the scholarship committee again for the ConocoAid High School District. I'm on board of the Lake Area Rotary Club Association, which we call LARCA. I'm also on the, as good on the LARCA Fire Rescue Committee, and serve as treasurer of both. We've raised more than $670,000 and provided grants in excess of $300,000. And, one of my other big ones, I stand in need at Lower Lake High School. I've led, led the effort to establish an ag program there with something that I'm especially proud of. It's in its third year and growing. Reason why I'm saying all of this is that I want you to understand, I want, I want you to understand my commitment to things in this community, and that I follow through. The people that I, committees that I've worked on will tell you that when I take something on, I follow through on it. So, I'm both qualified, in my opinion, and, and I had the will and the ability to get the job done.
You have a rich history. My next question goes about, what do you know about the current projects of the city?
Current projects, like the Highlands Park, which is currently in process. I think in fact, the last planning commission meeting, it's in the final process of going forward. And hopefully, looking forward to being involved with that, both as a parks and recreation. I'm not exactly sure what that's called, if that is that part of the job as planning commissioner. Certainly, the general plan, which is, I understand, will be hopefully coming to fruition in the next couple of months, will, will help to guide the planning commission going forward.
Do you have a defined idea about, or have you taken any public stance on any current project in the city, such as the general plan update or the Walmart expansion project?
I have not taken a public stance on those. I think the general plan will hopefully, and zoning ordinance to flow out of them, my position on the planning commission would be to work within the framework of those things to judge them when we, when they do come before the planning commission and make our recommendations.
Are there any other projects you have concerns about?
There's one thing that's not a project this time. Provincalia is probably one that I would have to recuse myself from. We own the property adjacent to that land, and if, if and land endeavor gets to a stage of development, because I have the land, I'm a part-owner of the land next door, it may, may cause a conflict. I think I would probably ask for guidance from the city attorney to be sure of that. That would be one possible one.
Some staff reports and documentation for planning commission agendas can be several hundred pages long. Do you have the commitment of time it takes to thoroughly review the planning commission documents before the meetings?
Hopefully, all of that thing, all of that I read you, literally, tells you that I do have the commitment. And yes, I will take, make the time to thoroughly understand anything that comes before us.
Wonderful. Five, what would you do as a planning commissioner if you were unsure of how to vote on a particular issue? And how would you handle a decision that you did not agree with?
Well, as a member of the planning commission, I'm one of five people, and the planning commission acts as, as a single body. So, obviously, if the rest of the commission went a different way than I did, I would have to accept that. As far as, repeat the first part of that question.
What would you do as a planning commissioner if you were unsure of how to vote on a particular issue?
I would try to ask for more information and see if I could, to solve that, that one thing. I know we have staff, and attorney, we have planning staff, and I would ask more questions.
Is there anything more you'd like to add?
Let me see. Well, just that again, I'm trying to work, because of my training and my education in real estate as an appraiser, as a sales associate, as a, as a land manager, I think makes me especially well-suited to the position of planning commissioner. I have an understanding of real estate law. I understand the concept of proper land use and planning. My experience in agriculture, I think, will also enhance handling questions on the parks and recreation aspect of the position. And I've served on a number of boards and could work effectively with other members of the commission. And that would be about it.
Thank you very much for your time.
In, where is it here? Oh, fuck it, no. Nine?
Hi, everybody.
Hello. Mr. Shandera?
Shandera.
Thank you, sorry.
Shandera. Vice Mayor Dixon, councilmembers and community members. I'm Peter Shandera. I've enjoyed being a property owner here in Clear Lake since the turn of the century, really, 2000. I'm not that old. I was attracted to Clear Lake by the affordability of housing. Moved up from the Bay Area, and also the wealth activities here in the county with all the things that might be interesting getting involved with. My realtor, when I first was looking at property, I looked at eighteen places, drove by a lot of them. But on the drive up to show me my current house, she pointed out that I would be really happy with it because it had pavement on both sides. And it still does, in one form or another. With a background in both urban and regional planning, my first year in town, I began to look for ways that I could contribute, use my skills better around the community. I sent a letter to the city seeking some job with an eye on formation, forming a Parks and Recreation Department, programs to improve the lives of those around town. I still think the city could use or benefit from a year-round swimming pool, fully functioning program on a growing population of seniors. Joyce is doing a great job at the senior center right now. But, no job existed. Over the past few years, I found that Clear Lake was really more receptive to volunteer efforts. And for that end, I offered up my services to Joan Felipe, the past city manager. At her request, I devoted my time to three studies that gave me some insight into issues and a chance to be of service. The first was a survey of city-owned and redevelopment properties, three, four years ago, I think. I was really surprised to see the number of parcels that had come into the city's jurisdiction. It was a big list, printouts of all these little parcels, and it seemed that no one here at the city had really gone out to visit them. It was my job to find out if they were, where they were. So, I mapped those. Significant among those discoveries were properties out off of Phillips and the avenues that now appear to have potential for a much-needed neighborhood park in that well-populated neighborhood on the east side of town. That first study was followed by the city showing interest in getting a plan together for Lake Shore. And so, I took on the Lake Shore Avenue Property Study. That turned into really a door-to-door study of each of the properties between Austin Park and Redwood Park. And I reported, mapped all the property owners, the current occupancy, current uses of those properties, and condition of the structures. It was challenging because I would go out and walk Lake Shore one day, and there would be a tattoo parlor on that side of the street. And then I'd go back out a couple of days later, and it moved. It's over on the other side. So, there was a lot of action going on among Lake Shore, and there still is. Things are continuing to change in this time. The last project was the study of ADA compliance of crosswalks. In this case, I got busy mapping all the intersection crosswalks and existence of curves and gutters and sidewalks within the city limits. I enjoy mapmaking, but was frustrated, in a good way, by how busy the public works department here in the city was at that time. I think they'd just gotten a grant. I would come home from being out, checking out all different places along the intersections, and work out a plan, and then when I went out a couple of days later to check some little detail, the local works would be out there installing a curb and gutter on Austin Avenue. And then another occasion, I went out to check something, and it was up by Pomos School. In a matter of three or four days, they had put in a whole new stretch of sidewalk. So, there were a lot of improvements going on, and it was really very impressive, and it's come along since. Most recently, after conversations with Mort Low and Joyce Overton over at senior center, my wife and I go there on Tuesdays for an exercise class, and usually hang out for lunch afterwards. We, Mort really brought it to my attention. He had the desire to see some improvements done on the outside of the facility there. And so, I recently drafted up a conceptual plan for a park development on the north side of the facility. Joyce may have mentioned it to you at this point. The center offers a nice array of classes during their limited hours, and it was felt that the enhanced facilities would give program participants a broad range of outdoor recreation opportunities. The plan indicates development of Porchew and Bachi Vault Courts, much like were proposed at Highland Park. And a walking path that would provide better experience than our current programs, which rely on walking around the parking lot for exercise. All of those additions to the facility would, of course, be available for the community at large. It selected to serve out the term of retiring Bill Perkins on the planning commission. I'd look forward to implementation of the new general plan when it's adopted, and seeing improvements phased in on the Highlands Park. That little park has such potential, and it's gonna be a real gem here for the city. And I'm sure the chamber and the visitor's center are dying to get into their new home. Efforts to clean up the city through code enforcement and the work done by citizens caring for Clear Lake are really beginning to show, and the renewed effort to improve our streets will really help the largest city in Lake County raise some of the bad, bad press we've received over the years. Things are really looking up here in Clear Lake, and I want to be part of it. And I thank you for this opportunity.
I do have five questions, but you've answered almost all of them. But in the interest of being equitable, I will ask them of you, and you can add anything that you did, or just let us know you feel like you answered that already. Tell us about your qualifications, and then why you would be a good choice for planning commission?
Well, for nearly thirty years, I've worked around planning, initially with parks and recreation and events at Hayward.
Can I interrupt you for one second, Mr. Shandera? If you can speak into my microphone, please.
Yeah, for the first twenty-eight, twenty-nine years of my career, I, for all of those years, I've worked around planning in one form or another. Initially, for the city of Hayward, I worked in their planning department in Parks and Recreation. So, I was there during the building boom, a lot of park development, trail development went on. I was involved heavily in the opening of the shoreline, out by the Sandale Bridge in Hayward for public access, when it was, easements were required, and all from Leslie Salt initially. After that time, in the eighties, I have worked extensively in environmental planning through graphic design. My departments have, have been focused on geotechnical and environmental engineering concerns. A lot of community communication efforts, base closures. I was really involved in closures out in Ford Ward, and Hunter's Point. And the city put together a pretty comprehensive approach to their answering questions from the community. approach to their answering questions from the community about their concerns of what was really going on on the bases, what really was happening in terms of the cleanup, particularly at Fort Worth, they had gotten a lot of pressure from the Hunter County press because they were beginning to say there was a cover-up there. My efforts resulted in, within a week's time, my photographing all the sites on the base, putting together two large community displays, one on the base and one circulate, as well as a newsletter and fact sheets that were regularly put out. I look forward to helping out in the city, bringing some of that experience to the questions that come up with the day-to-day developments. One particular period in my career, I worked with a wetland planning remediation company in Enrico, and those were all small developments that had an impact in one form or another that came to us to provide remediation for them to go ahead and build some homes, new businesses that maybe impacted a seasonal stream or thermal pools, or various water features, natural water features. So my projects there were going out with biological staff to assess the situations and then creating, through my, really my park design experience, along with the biologic, viable plans for remediation of these impacts to the natural environment. Usually that involved replacing impacted wetlands at a rate of about 3:1 to assure that the initial amount of impact would be compensated.
What do you know about current city projects?
I think, looking back at this last year, you guys have tackled successfully, came up with plans to handle the base issues. That's been marijuana-growing concerns, largely through the expanded efforts of code enforcement, I think. That seems to have come together real nicely, and I know you're now putting out permits for those, with some ability to manage those. Code enforcement continues, and I think it's really great. I mean, I've seen improvements just in my own, within a two-block radius of the house, with abandoned cars and things being picked up. Your work on the general plan for the city, I think, is such a huge thing. It's been so long coming. I look forward to being involved in more of that. And also, I've always had my eye on Highlands Park. I've been concerned with the way it's just been sitting for so long. And then last year, when the farmer's market started up there, it was, it wasn't done with any, I don't think, any oversight, but the city, there were vehicles allowed to drive in and park under the old trees, whereas when it was down in Redbud Park, one vehicle was parked in the parking lot. And that compaction of soil and the woodlands is detrimental. I think I pointed that out to a couple of people there, but it didn't make any difference. And that's about it.
Do you have a defined idea about, or have you taken a public stance on any of the current projects in the city, such as the general plan update or the Walmart expansion project?
Actually, I got a call from Bruno the other day, and he was interviewing me ahead of time a little bit about Walmart expansion and the airport property. I guess one of my concerns is the, and I don't know how much the Planning Commission gets involved in this, but I see things happening, like the installation at Old 53 in Lake Shore. We have more auto parts stores within 100 yards of each other there than, I think, a city twice its size, my, over the whole town. I also went to visit a favorite Mexican restaurant in town. We have a lot of them. And this was the Laguna Restaurant down near the art gallery. We've always enjoyed going in there because they have music at night, and the, there was another Mexican restaurant moved in three doors down, the other end of that mall. It's a short-lived mall. But when I went in on a Friday night, there was normal music. The food hadn't changed, but the crowds had gone down to the other place. I guess you chalk that up to competition, but I wonder if spreading those kinds of businesses out a little bit more is something that can be addressed. Walmart is pretty dated as it is. To expand, I think, would, by expanding the food end of it, I think is a big part of that, would have an effect on Ray's food place down there. You know, again, it's, I've heard it so many times, Robin period, pay-poll, kind of, where you, you open one business and another one struggles. It's probably evolution. The airport property, I remember my first drive up here years ago, driving through before I even considered buying property here, and it was at night, and I didn't really know where I was. But there was an airport, and there were airplanes taking off and stuff, but it just kind of surprised me that it was right there. When I moved up here, one of the biggest things I found was the water park. Of course, the airport had been long gone, but the water park was a wonderful facility for my kids when they were growing up, and my grandkids. And then, I don't know, whatever really happened there, but it's gone. And, you know, when I mentioned swimming pool and stuff, I really would like to see something happen that would provide that kind of outdoor recreation, water experience for kids and families in the area. We have a huge lake here, but the water quality isn't always the best.
Are there any other planning projects or issues that you have concerns about?
I guess, you know, it's the ongoing struggle of roads. We do a good job here in town, keeping the periphery roads and those few internal roads in good shape, but I have personal friends who, they lose your car in some of the holes on some of the streets, like over on Burns Alley Road, where there is no pavement. You know, I drive one block down to visit a friend of mine, and it takes me about 20 minutes to drive that block because my car is lunging. Working towards that half-cent sales ad has always been a struggle, and there have been various proposals put out there over the last few years. I endorsed it soundly this last time around, and was kind of raked over the coals by the local press on social media, on Facebook a lot. But I think it's worth pushing for that, keyed in with an education program to enlighten to the best that we can, anyway, residents in the area about the effect of that tax on their livelihood and budgets. And the fact that a lot of that income would come in from outside of our area, people coming over to Port to shop or whatever. Groceries, which is a big part, as we saw in the slideshow, a big part of what everybody spends money on, not taxable. So I think there's an element in town that just rebels at any kind of tax increase. And in the reality of all that, I think it would be unnoticed once it went through, so I would look towards working on that.
Some staff reports on documentation for the Planning Commission agendas can be several hundred pages long. Do you have a commitment of time it takes to thoroughly review these documents before the meetings?
I can't say it was thorough, but I went through 500 pages today, just looking at the new general plan. Of course, pausing for some time on all the graphics, not being too critical, but I think that every picture tells a story, and I think that the plan looked really good. I hope to get back in and be able to pursue that a lot more, and I think it'll become a living document once it's adopted, and it'll be something that we refer to regularly.
What would you do as a Planning Commissioner if you were unsure how to vote on a particular issue, and how would you handle a decision that you did not agree with?
I think he's gone now, but didn't he say I could call him up at any time? No, I really think being educated on all of these issues is number one. And so you do the research that you need to do, you talk with your cohorts, you talk with your neighbors, you talk with the people involved in whatever the proposal is, and their neighbors, and potential users of the new development, and see what their concerns are, and try and balance the needs of the city that grow over time with those developments to make sure that they meet everybody's needs and are acceptable as much as possible. I know there are times when you have to make decisions that are awkward, and that comes with being a decision.
And the last part of the question was, how would you handle a decision you didn't agree with?
Well, you know, working on a committee or a commission like this, I would work with my members of that commission, discuss it as much as we can, try and find that balancing point. In a way, it's a little bit like being on a jury. You need to come to a consensus, and so at some point, your personal biases kind of have to set aside, and you go with majority, but not, in my case, not with that, at least voicing a concern.
Is there anything else you'd like to add for us?
No. I look forward to being a part of this whole thing going on here. I understand that it's an interim position for just a year, but it gives me a year to see how it is, and even possibly, you know, stay on after that. Good experience.
Perfect, thank you very much. We'll have...
Do you want them to come in? Do you want them to go out? No, I think they need to go in.
Yeah, I think we'll leave them there while we discuss them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, you want to begin?
You guys are all chicken. That's what it is, you're chickens. Well, of course, they're both awesome. I mean, we've been very, very lucky that we have two people that are educated, but this doesn't happen to us enough, so I'm kind of like a little stunned, because we don't really have one person that just like absolutely stands up, but we really know that we can grab ahold of, but both of these guys are really good. They both have great experience. You know, Russ has been here for a long time, of course. He's very familiar with our areas. He's been involved in our community for so many years. And of course, Peter's been, you know, started coming on, really helping us with that, and so I think they're excellent. It's going to be hard, but I want to hear what everybody has to say. Again, Peter has a lot of planning, it's like a new place already, where he's worked with the city, has already kind of walked our city, obviously, and helped put a lot of plans together. So he does kind of have that experience in hand to be able to help us before the Planning Commission, so I think that's an edge for him, that I see that he has a real good edge, because he's kind of already had a lot of things with the city, and knows how we want to go, because he's been involved in that. He has a little edge there, I think.
I'm really impressed by the resume that Peter Shandere comes with, the urban and regional planning, worked with the Parks and Right, which happens to be a perfect match for this position, where you're both, that committee takes on both roles. I like the initiative he's taken in the small amount of time that he's been here, but then again, at the same time on the vice versa, you have the huge quantity of community service that Russ Kramer has put into not just this city, but the outskirts, and we all know that whatever happens outside also helps us. What happens here helps the outside. I agree with Councilmember Overton, great people to choose from. However, we need to choose one, and there's one thing that I really liked what Peter Shandere said, and that was, for a project, to talk to the people who would be affected by the project, because those are the people who live here, and as committee members and as council members, we represent those people. And so not only do you ask staff for more information, ask questions, but to talk to the people, to find out if this is going to be positive or negative for their experience in living in that area that's going to be affected by the development, expansion, whatever is going on, that to me, that goes along with my philosophy very, very well. I also feel that Mr. Shandere offers a slight difference. He brings, I believe, diversity to the Planning Commission that is already in existence with the four members remaining. And I think people bringing as many ideas to the table and opinions to the table is going to get us the right direction, the right choice on where to go. So at this moment in time, I'm leaning for Peter Shandere.
I just said, we kind of have a little experience that he had.
I kind of feel we have two completely opposite types of experience here before us. We have one that comes from our own heartland and our own current situation, and we have one that comes to us that really wants to be part of things and wants to bring what he has to us. So it's a very hard choice, because I think they're both very qualified in specific, different ways. I do know that this is Mr. Kramer's second time around wanting this position. That tells me he wants it, that tells me he's dedicated to it, and he's going to, he's going to put his all. He continues to apply, along with all the other volunteerism that he does in the community. It's a very hard decision on either one to just pick it or not. I'll wait him out for a second.
So, you want to go next, and then? All right. So some of the things that I see that Russ has that are also very awesome, what he has a face of experience, you know, so, and he has experience, he has land management and land use experience, so, you know, so there's a lot of experience there with him. One thing I heard Peter say that kind of made me kind of feel bad was, was that he'll try it this year and see how it goes, and I know Russ is going to be dedicated to do it for the long run, so that kind of, you know, kind of, I want something that I know pretty much is going to be there for the long run, so that kind of was one of the remarks that he made at the end that I worried about. This is just a year term, and as we know, we've got 17 guys to train, we do a lot of stuff, and we learn a lot of different things, and that, and we would be just another expensive city that has to do it to the next person, too, so we need to kind of think about that, too. And Russ, Russ has a lot of good experiences, too, though, if you really listen to what he had to say, you know, he knows planning, he knows zoning, he knows real estate, he knows land man, you know, usage, he knows appraisal, which is really great, one of your, you know, needs, these kind of things. So he has different backgrounds, you know, you know, different, different things that are also very good for, for this year. And I think, you know, his vision for the things that he's done here, too, are inside with making our city grow, too, so, yep. So that's what I think about the folks. I mean, they're both good people, they just have different things, and it just really is something that...
I agree, they're both highly qualified, overqualified for the volunteer labor that they're offering us out for free, so it, yes, so it really is, gosh, I just appreciate the fact that they would come forward and put in their applications and gone through this arduous process of being interviewed in public, which can be very daunting. I certainly don't want to lose either one of them, honestly. And so I appreciate how entrenched in the community they both are. So rather than trying to compare apples to oranges or their experiences, I went to, in my mind, the panel that we currently had and trying to find a fit for what currently is there to sort of diversify, like you said. We have someone who is ex-law enforcement, has been in the community a long time. We have a planner currently sitting on the, on the board. We have a small business owner. But I, I... Yeah. So, that would go, oh, yeah, I thought we talked about retired, yeah. So I, I think...
Dirk does survey.
Okay. So I think we have a pretty good, I feel like the experience that Russ talks about would fit at this point to diversify the knowledge on the, on the current planning commission.
And the thing that really, as Joyce said, points out to me, he keeps, he's consistent with coming here, he's consistent with staying involved, he's consistent with wanting to be part of this ongoing effort.
And I wrote that down too, that this is his second attempt here. It was really hard to not select him the last time as well. And like you said, we've been very fortunate to have a number of very high-quality applicants.
We have been, I have to say, in a lot of the cities that have lived in these planning commissioners that have been coming forward, we've been really lucky. It doesn't normally happen that way in the cities that have lived out over here.
I tell you, every one of these people that we've interviewed this time and last time would have been selected over me. When I was interviewing, I just happened to be in that pool of people, man.
We just pulled you out of the rabbit hat, so, yes, you got it. And I think, and like I said, I think Peter's got lots of qualities. I don't, I wouldn't want to lose him either because, you know...
Sounds pretty invested anyways, just liking to do what he does.
Yeah, I think he's got a lot of talents that I would never want to lose, but I do see that Russ has, you know, experience in it, and I do think the fit would be good. And I know that he'd be dedicated if we might just handle another year, you know, after this, that he would.
Anything further from the council? Sorry. I'm not having, we're not having a private conversation. How weird. If there's nothing further from the council members at this time, I'd like to open this for public comment. Anyone from the public care to weigh in?
I'm Cheryl, I'm in President of the like, you may have a... I can see that there's so much interest in both of them, but I did have two observations that you did not mention. And that is that with Mr. Kramer, he's involved in so many other things. I'm really concerned that that dedication may not be as strong or committed. I know that I'm looking at picking up new projects and I have let go of my other things so that I am free for the time required to move forward in a new endeavor. What I hear also from Mr. Shandere is that he's been working with the city specifically in this arena for a number of years and has maybe not, maybe he's not as aware of the processes that Kramer is in terms of what he's getting into, but I see him having taken steps within the planning activities of the city. So I just want to share that with you because I do think you're looking for a balance for them and their interests. And I see, I guess, a little bit differently than what I'm hearing from you.
Wasn't the last time you appointed a planning commissioner?
What's that thing? Did you know that predated you?
Yes.
It predated Drake's service, but not by long. It was a year.
That's what I thought. Not a year.
That's about a year ago.
About a year ago?
Speculating.
It's not a year, right?
Time flies, Mr. DeSlozne.
It's not a year.
Time flies.
It's close to a year.
Well, why is it you came up with all these questions for these individuals? And back three years ago, when you appointed a planning commissioner, all they did was come up here and say a few words and they were out. Well, you should have started one when...
Starting a new account.
Oh, yeah.
Do anything about the past.
Oh, yeah, you can. You can, Joyce, but yeah, there can be things done about the past. Because the past is what is going to endanger your future. Oh, by the way, another thing. Denise, are you aware that there is an ordinance in this town that we're at? Do you rent your property out?
We, we have to stay on the current agenda. We can't strengthen that. We can't continue.
Well, she has to pay her water and trash for her. It doesn't matter. It's not to do with the planning commission.
It's an ordinance.
If I may, before Mr. Lewis starts, I was one of the interviewed people three years ago, and I believe there were five to seven questions for each one of us as we sat out there and walked in. Maybe what you're thinking about is after we did our closed session interviews, I mean, last year, we didn't have any questions asked when they came to the podium because those questions had already been asked in the closed session.
Thank you. That's actually why I came up here. Joey Lewis, former council member, I was mayor three years ago when we were interviewing. And yes, we had the same basic plethora of questions. So I don't know where this memory loss came from, but it's absolutely the same process we did three years ago. I wasn't here for the last one, but I just wanted to come up and set that record straight.
Thank you.
Well, Joey, that record actually is straight.
Hi, I don't come here very often, but it's been very enjoyable. And I too took a little moment when Peter said at the end, "Well, I'll see how it works." And knowing him as well as I do and how dedicated he is into anything he puts his effort and time into, I think that was actually a statement of humility, meaning that he was recognizing it was an interim position and he didn't know how it would go. And I just wanted to throw that, that observation of mine in from a personal viewpoint and maybe consider that, that it wasn't a lack of commitment or a lackadaisical statement, "Well, we'll see how it goes," because he's not lackadaisical about anything and he's already put in so much of the time and, and love into this community. And I think he's very eager to, to move forward more fully as, as a team member with that. Thank you.
I don't envy you the choice that you have to make, but it's really wonderful to have two qualified candidates come before you. I've been on the commission nine years, 14 years, and I've seen a number of commissioners come by the wayside, who've served for a few months, and then they find out there's a lot more involved in it than what they thought there was going to be. I, I don't know Mr. Shandere, Shandere, I don't know him. I do know Mr. Kramer. I know what Mr. Kramer's dedication is to the community. And yes, he's involved in a number of different things and he's all the time looking for other things to do that helps the community. The other, the other thing that I didn't know about him is I think with the current commission that we have, you've got somebody on there that's been a land surveyor, very successful land surveyor, that helps the commission a lot. We have, uh, on land, but we have, the commissioners that are on there now, we've got one, she's a planning committee, a planning commissioner, planning development director for the county that's serving on our city commission. And she did work here prior to going to the county. Natalie, yes. And with people like that on the commission and the experience that we've gotten with these folks, I think we've got a really great commission working for the city now. Concentrates on trying to do what the planning commission should be doing, not try to become city council people. That's a different job, and that's what your job was. And I'm a little concerned about the number of references to planning, to council work that, yes, the county planning commission can help, but it's not really the planning commission's job to do that work. And that's something I have to keep in mind. So with that in mind, I would be very happy to either one of them on the commission, but I think, yeah, Mr. Kramer has an edge on it because he brings in knowledge of this area. He's extremely familiar with the fire department. That's a area that we frequently get involved with when we're doing planning commission issues. It just, it's a good fit for the commission. Thank you.
Normally, people that want to be appointed or run or elected office, they have a mission in mind. Could be roads, it could be fine dining, it could be tours, it could be parks. Now, for 30 years, the council hadn't had a mission statement of what they wanted to accomplish.
Are we going to get to the agenda item?
In 30 years, I haven't heard one council member even have a mission statement of what they would like to accomplish.
Did you hear one of the other two gentlemen have a mission statement?
I would like to have heard if appointed, what kind of mission they have.
That's a good suggestion for questions. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right, we'll close public comment. Back to the council.
So we have somebody that's a planner. We have a surveyor. We have a police department representative.
Small business owner.
Small business owner. I think that would be something I was missing. Another thing that Russ would represent is not just the fire department, but he also has a school experience, you know, that you can lead that on too. So it just kind of depends on what we want. You can have a graphic designer here who's been mapping too, so you can do that talent there. Ben is not also on that, you know, on the planning commission. I don't know how much a surveyor does graphics, so. And the planner, I think they probably figure some of that out. I'm just looking at like you right now, if somebody needed some knowledge, that's just on the commission, and we'll review the best knowledge for us now.
Councilmember, to Councilwoman Soubatier?
I'm not at this one. I'll be back. I guess what I wanted to bring up is, I was thinking of, I am back. We're not asking for past 10 o'clock yet. I'm thinking about the work that's been done currently for the city. And I think that those lake shore property study, the survey for the redevelopment properties, the ADA compliance crosswalk, and now the plant park over at the senior That's a pretty heavy, direct work volunteered for the city itself. And while it may not make perfect sense, we don't want to extinguish that flame for working for our city, for doing stuff for our city, for volunteering for our city while Mr. Kramer has volunteered for so many different things that I don't think that's going to extinguish the flame for him to volunteer for the city as well. And this is direct stuff that has specifically aided our city to help plan for our future that has been done by Mr. Shandere. I agree that he is not the missing link in the skill sets in the file on board. And so at this point, Mr. Kramer would make for a better fit if there's real estate knowledge and land use knowledge, though I'm sure that any planner would also have land use knowledge as well. Yeah, completed my thought for the moment. I'll be back.
My thought on that is we've said how we have two awesome applicants right at the moment, and we're having a hard choice. One of them's applied twice. How many times is he going to keep reapplying before he gets discouraged? So I, I'm, I have to repair.
So, okay, you were talking about all the work that he's done, and he's done an awesome job, and I mean, like, I appreciate everything that he's done too. Russ has done pretty much a lot, maybe not done the survey type things, but Russ has been there with all his equipment. He has, I don't know how many times he does ditches for the city, he has, anything that we wanted from him, he has always been there to do too. So, and he's been doing it the same. So I just want to point out that Russ has, you know, Russ has done that. And time, I know that was mentioned that maybe he has too much time, and you know, it's really funny is I got turned down for a board because I was told I thought I was too busy. I don't apply for something, and I don't believe that anybody does, that they don't feel that they're going to dedicate their time to. So I was kind of insulted when I got told that was the reason why I was turned down for the board. Because I thought, well, if I didn't care, I wouldn't be here. And if I wasn't going to dedicate my time to this organization, I wouldn't have applied for it. So I don't think time is something that I would even consider because I don't think I would have thought that he would have applied for it if you didn't think he had the time. So...
If you want something, go ahead and ask the busy person.
That's right. The doers are the doers. We all know we don't get any...
I got told those words by someone just three and a half short years ago who's sitting in this room.
The doers are the doers. So I agree, I think Russ has applied twice. I think he's done a lot for our community. I think he fits in a board that is now, you know, and I anticipate that there's probably not too much future that there may be another seat available for, for somebody else to come on.
I'd like to encourage Mr. Shandere to...
I believe that's one here.
This position is for one here.
No, but I mean, that position will open.
Right, I can add one here.
Are we at a point where we can entertain a motion?
Can we entertain a motion? Do we have an exact wording on this one? Can we entertain a motion to appoint Russell Kramer to our planning commission?
Very discussion. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion from the council? Saying none, roll call vote please. Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Soubatier?
Aye.
Councilmember DeSlozne?
I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Fruchin?
Aye.
Okay, then I guess at this point, I thought we were done. We need to get the two gentlemen and bring them in. We need to get the two gentlemen and bring them in.
Thank you.
Okay, so however this job, as it's turned out, I got the job of giving the news. I just would like both of you to know that the discussion was animated, that we had a very difficult time selecting between two highly qualified, wonderfully involved applicants. And it really came down to trying to select the person who would fit in with the council or the commission that exists. And so we've selected Mr. Kramer to fill the current vacancy with the planning commission and encourage you, Mr. Chanderay, to continue to be involved and apply at the next opportunity.
Congratulations.
I think.
Mr. Folsom, if you need to.
I was just going to give Mr. Chanderay my card, so he'd please.
We don't want you to go away by the way. Ask your wife who said that.
Okay, so we're back to item 12. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Item 12, review of the real estate owned by the city of Clear Lake and the Clear Lake Redevelopment Agency. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Bettmell, our finance director, to explain this.
Wow, that red looks great in the dark.
No, why have light? Okay, if someone asked me to use a light, I have plenty of them. I have this light, and I have that light. I'm all lit up. This is, every so often, the city council or the board of directors of appropriation should spend some time and review the property and the assets that they own and whether they're being used efficiently or effectively for their organization. And anyway you cut it, the city of Clear Lake is a corporation and is a business. Too often, in the discussion of day-to-day business, we talk about the revenues and expenses, but we don't talk about the assets that the city owns and whether they're being currently used effectively. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go over an overview of real estate owned by the city and by the redevelopment agency of the city, or otherwise the successor agency. The way this report's set up is I put the larger parcels and the parcels that are actually in use first. I've identified the redevelopment properties as we go along, because some are owned by the city itself, some are owned by the successor agency. When I say redevelopment or successor agency, I'm using those terms interchangeably. Then after that, there would be parcels which are natural groupings of properties. When I say natural groupings of properties, I'm talking geographically, they're relatively close together, and there'll be a couple of slides in there where it becomes very obvious why they are that way. Then there are a number of single parcels that are out there, and then there are some remnant pieces that are also out there. Total number of parcels that are owned are basically 58. Oops. Sorry. I got the wrong one. I will. I also have.
So you really do need to watch.
I do, I guess, okay. All right, so let's start with what we have immediately in our surrounding area. It's Austin Park, Austin Resort, and the city hall. And you'll see Austin Park is right here, and you'll notice that that property ownership also extends on this finger that goes out here. And this piece here is Austin Resort, and this, of course, is city hall right here. Now, this is all the park, and it's open and available for use as a park. The Austin Resort parcel is owned by the redevelopment agency, and because it's subject to the long-range property management plan, what that means is ultimately that property is going to be sold off for some form of development to be determined. So when that property is sold, the funds that come in will ultimately be distributed out to the entities that contributed the tax increment that bought it. When we talk about this piece of property, I would suspect that if a developer comes in to buy the Austin Resort property, they're going to want to have this, these finger of property along here, which gives them access to the lake. That is owned by the city, so you might want to keep that in mind in terms of the usage of that property.
Chris, can I just interrupt you? Go back to your board for a brief second. Just wanted to give you a bit of an update on the building across the street that's on the Austin Park Resort property. We did have that tested for hazardous materials. We were hopeful that it would not, that it would come back clean. It did not, so we're going to have to go through hazardous materials maintenance on that property before we can actually demo it or do whatever with that property.
Mr. Beck, on a question, you highlighted an area to the north with your laser pointer, but I believe that's acre five, and that's not part of this redevelopment property. Is that correct? That's privately owned?
We talked about.
That area there.
Right there?
Nope.
No, that's not part of it. No, I tried to highlight the property with a color so you could clearly identify the property and make it a little translucent so we could still see what was underneath it. And, no, that.
Just to clarify.
Correct. That property is not part of any of these that are owned by us. Okay. The other comment I want to make is, as we go through and we look at these different properties, you might want to think a little bit about the usage of the parks in particular. And a strategy made up forward as you continue on through this.
And if I could just interrupt you one more time?
Sure.
We have a consultant that we brought on board to do a master plan for Austin Park as well, and we will be doing a open house in April. I don't have the date right on hand, I won't be knowing. I believe it's at the end of April, but we'll be announcing that when it's forthcoming.
Thank you. Now, what we have here is Valentine Field, Redbud Park, and Thompson Harbor. The ball fields are up here, Valentine Fields are up here. This is the juice center right here. This building is no longer there anymore, that was torn down. And then this, of course, is Thompson Harbor, and then a lot of this is parking for Thompson Harbor. One of the comments that I want to make, this is also the second large park that we have in the city, I would also want to point out that, you know, the management kind of talked about the use of these parks. Clearly, you have a couple of different usages on these properties, and sometimes their usage can be inconsistent or incompatible in the sense that if you have a bunch of people there playing baseball, they need places to park, and there's a limitation of the ability to park. And if they park over here, you're obviously keeping people from being able to park their boat trailers and boats for launching. So I want to think about the ultimate usage of that property. This next one is Highlands Park. Now, there's no particular reason why, there's two different colors here, just to distinguish the fact that Highlands Park is actually three different parcels of property together. Down here, you have the Yzidas property, which would be a wonderful property to be able to annex to the park if we could ever get our hands on it in a useful condition. And then, of course, up here is a private residence, which I believe there may be some action on in the future. Highlands Park, we have a master plan coming forward that I believe our city manager's going to be talking about a little later this evening. But again, this is our third major park, so you're looking at Redbud, Highlands, and Austin Park, all within not a great distance from each other in the city, but clearly over on the lake side of the city. All right. This is the senior center. Obviously, there's the senior center right there, and then back here is where the community, I believe the community garden is supposed to grow. It's a good-sized piece of property. The senior center is used quite a bit, it's rented out, and we, as a matter of fact, our last payment on the senior center will be made in July of this year.
Can I make a statement on that?
This is Oguland Canyon. We're in escrow on the purchase of this property. The strategy for Oguland Canyon, this is Oguland Canyon Road down here, and a lot of this paralong here is down basically at street level, and then there's a road that goes up, and a lot of this is up to the higher level. The strategy with regard to this property is for animal control, ultimately to transfer the corporation yard, I believe some storage for the police department, and potentially the ability to lease out a portion of it to another business to generate some income off of the property. We're in escrow on the property and having some tests done, and I don't know if the staff has any of them. This is the airport property. The airport property is technically owned by the city of Clear Lake. However, it is subject to the long-range property management plan. Of course, the strategy for the airport property is for it to be transferred to a developer who will ultimately develop it into a regional shopping center. There are some improvements that will probably need to be done to that property, and of course, that property's been slowed down a little bit by the redevelopment dissolution process that we have to go through in terms of transferring that property. This property is a piece of, is a 20, almost a 29-acre piece of property on Old Highway 53, on the north side, yeah, the north side of Olympic. Large, flat, open piece of property. It's subject to the long-range property management plan, which means it would be scheduled to be sold. Let me make a comment about any of the properties in the long-range property management plan. The city can opt to buy those properties from the redevelopment agency or successor agency. There is a process to go through, we'd probably have to pay for a market value for the property. I have had that property appraised. One of the strategies that your staff was looking at was thinking about the whole parks arrangement and how they're aligned. And the idea is, property that's owned by the city generally does not generate property tax revenue if we don't pay property taxes to ourselves. Typically, if it's owned by the city, it generally won't generate sales tax revenue either. But there is a third possibility for property owned by the city, and that's the idea that the usage of that property brings people to the city where they will spend money. So when we went back, when staff was talking about and going over this presentation, we were looking at the three original parks and looking at the parking issues with Valentine Field and the boating, we were thinking about how limiting the number of ball fields are and that there really isn't any place to play soccer in this area, large open field, soccer or football or those sorts of sports, because we don't have large open fields. One of the thoughts that, you know, the council might want to consider is maybe realigning the concept of the parks and identifying specific uses for parks. And this is, this is part of the reason why you review property ownership, to see whether it's being used efficiently. So for example, if you were to take the ball, if you were to acquire this property and create a sports complex out there in conjunction with perhaps private interests or perhaps in conjunction with the school district, who might have some money available for improvements, we might set up a whole sports complex out there to bring those soccer games and soccer tournaments and baseball tournaments and softball tournaments, and there's a lot of large open field there. The advantage to that is, is you move those ball fields, if you go back up to, oh, darn, this is difficult. This laptop doesn't have a lot of capacity, so I've got to go back. So if we go back to this one, if you take the ball fields out of there and you make this much more usable for boating, the possibility of getting bass tournaments back in and like that might be more possible. So you're realigning the use of that property to something that's more oriented towards boating and the lakes, bass tournaments. A lot of times, when you have bass tournaments or other kinds of recreational activities, a lot of times they may be motor homes, a place where they can park their motor homes and also tow their boats. There are a lot of hotels that are conveniently located there. So the council might want to consider just reorienting that park. Moving down to Highlands Park, if you have a plan for that park, that could be much more like an adult park. And then if you go to Austin Park, which is up at the top, there are a lot of family-oriented activities that can go on in there, like, for example, concerts in the park, movies in the park, and meetings, so on and so forth. So when I talk about this, I'm just creating ideas for the council to consider using the property in a different way. I'm not suggesting you need to do that, but if you look at the properties that the city owns, you might want to consider those additional uses. So let me get back down to, this is somewhere here, okay, there you go. All right. So those were the large pieces that are currently actually used as parks except for Oguland, which is in the process of being purchased, and of course, the redevelopment property, which is vacant now but might be usable. We now get into a series of properties which are typically single lots that are grouped together. So these properties are on Acacia, Foxwood, Mint, Sunoma, and Peony Streets. This over here is Pomos, the grass fields of Pomos School, so Pomos School is just right down here. And these are all properties that are owned by the redevelopment agency. I don't know, I've been looking in the past, I assume that there was some sort of strategy for acquiring all of those properties. But the fact is, we own those properties now, the question is, do we sell them? Because that's what generally is required under the long-range property management plan. Or do we acquire them back from the redevelopment agency and develop them in some way or another? So those are grouping of properties that are all held together, and the ones that are outlined are the ones that we own. Now, obviously, you know, you can't acquire the, can't acquire all of those because there's a house there and a house there. But there was some sort of strategy in the past, and I don't know whether the council might want to consider an additional strategy. Up on 36th Avenue, over at the avenues, we own several properties. These properties here, this is 36th Avenue, these are all owned by the redevelopment agency. There is a road that runs down through here, and it does have a tendency to have a lot of water running through there, because I think there's a creek that runs through there, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. And I think the water is at, is that Highlands Water Company?
And cannot have water.
Cannot, okay. Cannot have water companies right there. These two properties on the end, these are two lots here, and there's a lot over here. The city engineer and I went out and looked at these two lots. There is a, an old rundown home on there, which probably should go away in a garage. But that's actually a fairly good piece of property, if we wanted to think about either merging the lots or putting two separate homes on there. We do have low and moderate income funds. This lot over here is the same sort of thing. I don't know all of the status on the one over on this end over here, but that is owned by the city. Next. This is a single lot we own off of the Am Road extension. This is Walmart right here, this is the entrance, this is parking lot for Uva College up here, and we own this lot right here. Basically, not accessible unless you walk up from the parking lot or cut yourself a road down through here. You can see that there was intended to be a road there, but nothing's ever been put in. So it's a landlocked piece that is owned by the city. On 30... Well, on 30, this is 35th Avenue. This is, this is another, oops. This is another lot right here, over on 35th. The other lots on 36th are right up over this way, I believe. So this is just a fairly large lot, and this is right there. There's no house on it or anything like that. This is on Old Highway 53, this is a piece we own, and this is up from the airport property. If you continue up this old 53, the airport property is right over here, just right on top of you there. So, so airport is over here, there's this corner lot right here, I don't know who owns this lot right there. This is a series of lots that were relatively speaking close together. This, this road right here really was supposed to go down this direction, but there's a bit of a gully here, so the road got moved over this way. So that road bisects this piece of property, so it's basically useless unless we relocated the road. This piece is a fairly good-sized piece, and this is a single lot up here. Now, I put these in dark red just to make them easier, easier to see because of the salt. These straddle Highway 53, this is over on the avenue side, these are two lots over on Pass Avenue. There is a single lot at the end of the court down here on Crawford Avenue, and that's over on this side of Highway 53. Neither, none of which have structures on. This is Morgan Avenue, this is over towards, towards Pomo direction. This is a lot that's owned by the city, acquired a number of years ago. It appears to be two lots that were joined together to have one single long lot here. There used to be a structure on there, there isn't now, it's a vacant piece of land. This is Redwood Road, right there, it's the fire department up on Olympic Boulevard, excuse me, Olympic Drive. And we own this piece right here, there's nothing, nothing on it. Now, these are basically some remnant, smaller remnant pieces. This is Olympic Drive right here, this is Old Highway 53, this is a triangular lot here, and then there's a... My batteries are going down on my pointer. So this is where the auto repair place is, up on Olympic Drive, and the truck is up in that direction up there. And then, over on the right side is, this is Olympic just up here at the bend. We have, those are actually four separate individual parcels all put together. They're very narrow, the creek runs right behind it, probably not usable for much of anything, but we own that. And then last, lastly are two remnant pieces. The one on the left is basically like 10 feet wide. And the story is, some years ago, and the theory was it's going to be used as a launch ramp, but nothing's ever happened with that, and I don't think it's really all that buildable, it's right there on the water. This piece, the public works director and I are taking a look at. There appears to be a mobile home, was it, on that property? I don't, don't know if anyone's living there or not. It's not supposed to be there.
It's a vacation home.
Well, someone's taking a vacation on our dime, so we're going to have to, we've got to do some investigation to find out the status there. But those are all the properties that the city owns, and I thought it would be important for you to just have a kind of a review of them and see if you have any comments or direction you'd like to give to staff.
Could we have the lights, please? Thank you. Councilmember, please. Any comment from council? Councilmember Spatia.
I had a quick question for Mr. Becknell. I wanted to ask, on the 36th Avenue properties that are redevelopment agency-owned, are these long-range property where we have to sell them? Or what are, we can back out on that having to sell it unless the city buys it, that's the only way, is that correct?
That is basically correct. I very much would not recommend going back to try and make a modification of the long-range property management plan at this time. But yes, the plan for the properties owned by the successor agency is to sell them. We, of course, could buy them, we would have to have them appraised, it would have to be approved by the oversight, by the successor agency, you say? Successor agency. It would have to then be approved by the oversight board, and then it would have to be finally blessed by the Department of Finance. But if it's at fair market value, at appraised value, I don't see it as why the Department of Finance would object.
Councilmember, over to you.
Thank you. Is there any of these properties, when you were looking at them over in the avenues, that would be something where a, that may not be available for, but for, or for sale, good large enough for a house or something, but maybe large enough for, or suitable for a park in any way, shape, or form? Such as even a BMX park or, because I know some of those aren't real buildable, but maybe they're buildable for something like that? Or is there a place where there was, we could actually cut a park, because there's no park over there? So I'm looking for a park on that side.
Well, the grouping of properties on 36th would seem to lend themselves well to that. Because water runs through there part of the year, might be a little bit of an issue, we would have to acquire those properties from the redevelopment agency. But they are a fairly good grouping of properties. That would allow you to have a larger park. The other possibility would be to do one or two, go out and simply acquire or take some of these others that the city actually owns and create what is in effect what we used to call down in Redwood, a pocket park. The problem with pocket parks is they really aren't large enough to be used effectively. You could pretty much put in, you know, maybe a playset or maybe a park bench or something like that, and that's pretty much all the use you can get. And the other, the other property we had into down there is they get really expensive to care for. So, yes, it is possible.
Thank you, anyone else? Councilmember Spatia, you have a comment?
Yeah, you asked for some ideas, so here's that, rather than a comment. I actually really like the idea of, then again, it's a double-edged sword, the idea of moving the baseball fields to a different area and making that into an RV park. If there's a chance of selling or leasing out a portion of it to be a gas station so people can gas up their boats and gas up their RVs, then that would be something that'd be really beneficial right there. I'm also, this is the double-edged sword, I really like the Old Highway 53 property. And while this doesn't mean that if you build it, other things won't come, at this moment in time, there's no commercial properties that surround it. I know when I go to a sporting event with my family, I can usually cross the street and go grab a bite to eat and then go back to soccer. Here, you'd have to get back into your car, travel a little down into the city in order to get something. And depending from where you're from, maybe you might choose to go back home rather than to come into the city. So maybe, again, if there's potential of leasing some of that property to create some type of commercial area where people can get food, something of the kind, that would be really beneficial as well. I don't know why I wrote "sell" on this one. Oh, yes. The Acacia, Boxwood, Mint, Sunoma, and Peony properties. I don't know what the city itself could do on those, but I would really look forward to being able to... If you sell it, I don't think it's going to sell very easily because of their location and the rough terrain and everything else. But making any kind of change or adjustment there would really help alleviate the issues that we have in their area with the dumping and stuff like that. So I'm thinking it's something that the city only would be able to help and take care of, maybe our low-income housing fund would be able to help with that, because that would make a huge difference with that area since it's such a dump site.
Appreciate your comments.
That's it, all my comments. And thank you very much for the presentation.
On the, on the Old Highway 53 here for the baseball field, I think that's a great idea to move. But if we put a stadium in there, now they would have food and everything, would that be allowed on that property? Or would that be something we would have to back climbing permission and have adjusted, or would be the issue on that?
There's, yeah, we're right at the beginning phases right now. One of the things that should be proved today was the amendment to the general plan, where we are going to be analyzing that site for park use.
So if we decided right now, because we're doing our general plan, I mean, we decide before the general plan's finished, we decided we wanted that, we could put that into our general plan now? Okay, with that, okay, that's kind of what I'm hoping to do, thank you.
Councilmember Luuslo.
I don't know if you guys are just trying to jerk the tears out of me tonight or what, but this presentation, and I don't know if it was Mr. Becknell's or Mr. Folsom's complete idea here, but it's the most complete presentation I've had since I've sat on council. And the ideas and the possibilities that are coming up are just, they should be announced, but there are some things that I'm like, wow, I'm sorry, it just doesn't need to be. But this presentation is great, and I'm excited of the ideas that can come forward to everybody. I just had a comment.
Well, I think if we went and looked back in the annuals that dusted off, dusted off the boxes that are probably in the shelves on that, I believe when that property was acquired on Old Highway 53, that was by redevelopment, that was the intention. A lot of our residents are traveling south to middle town for soccer. A sports complex was one of the key ideas when that came up through redevelopment. I also understand, comments council Spatia made, councilmember Spatia made. It is out, pretty much in the middle of nowhere, you wouldn't have to travel into town. So I think those are other things. But looking at the point of order here and what we're wanting to do is just to give staff direction. And I think from my position, kudos, great presentation, Mr. Becknell, thank you very much. I think that we should proceed and move forward with these ideas, but also remembering that, you know, these single properties, these properties that aren't contiguous to other city lots or businesses, as I see our future brightening, those may become more valuable to sell to a private entity for a home, a single-family home, maybe something like that. Because they are too small, as was pointed out, you might have a place to park a car or a park bench, but other than that, it's difficult to see. One last point, there was a couple of long, narrow strips along some waterways, some drainages, things like that. In other urban areas, what I've seen them do is, through Public Works, Mr. Aaron, there's some trails and some nice pathways and places where people can get out and walk and maybe even divert off of a standard sidewalk like we have in that area. And it kind of gives you that wilderness feeling when you're walking along those areas, and it's a good way to exercise. So, and a good use of the land with minimal investment of infrastructure. So maybe something else to consider, but I would like to see more progress for that. But I'd also like to, you know, we do have a parks and rec, so anything that has to do with our parks and rec committee, I think should go to them for discussion first.
Councilmember Luuslo. Councilmember Spatia.
So I know it's not on the highway itself, but I've always looked at those properties a little triangle on Olympic and Old Highway 53 on both sides. And I always felt like that was a good place to maybe put a welcoming and sign. I just don't see us being able to sell those properties since they're such oddly shaped and so small. But I just thought that we don't have a welcoming on Olympic, and that that might be a possible process. I was going to say something similar for the Olympic and Locust, a bench, some, some nice area for people to be able to enjoy rather than just walk along the sidewalk and look at, would make a difference. My one concern for some of these is that it's a lot of properties. And we've already had the discussion that we don't want to be hypocrites in a way that we maintain our properties. And so while some may raise in value in the near future, are we really showing the right leadership in our community by holding on to these properties that we may not be able to maintain? Right now, we have an extra boost in our public works, but that's not going to last all that long because that's a limited time only that we have that boost. And so I would like to see a list of properties maybe that we want to put out for sale and then choose between those properties, because I don't think we can maintain all of these. I know that I've visited most of these properties in the past year, and I even brought Mr. Folsom with me. And some of them, we kind of covered our eyes as we went through, because that's not what we should be showing off to the public as far as the city property. So if that's possible in the near future to come back with a list of potential sales so we can choose, pick and choose from those. So if you limit the number of properties that Public Works has to look at every single year, that would be great.
Is that any of the persons here?
I was going to say, that's what I was going to say.
I was going to say, that's what I was going to say.
They decide what we want to keep and then...
Or some of them.
Yeah. So the ones on Acacia boxwood, that, slide 10?
Oh, area.
Yeah. I was thinking of housing stock for that, too, but middle-income bracket housing, because one of the big draws for families who want to move into there is how close in proximity are they to a school? And here, students would be walking across the street to go to school. So I think that would be a big bonus for a developer to come in and put some mid-income housing there. And we, as a community, need to increase the amount of mid-level income housing we have. We have a lot of low income, and we want to increase that housing stock. So that's what I was thinking for that.
Do you think that, like a unified might have solutions, it's proximity?
Well, I did at first, but then the school's kind of way down here, so it would be difficult for them, and students way down here, but that's not for me to decide. But where I was thinking...
If I may interject, if they just purchased or are looking to purchase a property behind Pomona, rather than on this side?
Yeah, I think...
So I think that they've already added, or are planning on already adding, quite a large property.
Pomona's actually one of their sites that it has room to expand. Hurst Valley is landlocked, Lower Lake High School is pretty much landlocked, unless we're going to move the cemetery, or Lower Lake, I'm pretty sure, same thing, so.
It's not big enough.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I was thinking, though, that possibly Woodland Polish might be interested in the property on the Dan Road Extension, slide 12, that has no access point, but it's adjacent to...
To the border.
Yeah, to the border, so I was thinking that might be good there. Definitely community park in the avenue somewhere. 36th Avenue, I think, would be more accessible than the one on 35th, that's further up into the avenue.
More opportunity there, too, so.
What are the dimensions on that?
Yeah. Good question. I want to say it's one to three for five lots. I think it's five lots, so there's likely roughly 50 by 100.
More.
I guess a nice piece there. Oh, I'm talking about the smaller one across the street.
Oh, yeah.
And again, when I'm talking about housing stock, once there's a big park there, then the developer will want to create housing there that people will be more attracted to, because there's park access right there.
I just ask the Public Works Director, do you know how big those lots are on that 36th Avenue? East?
They're, the ones on the east side, they're not very big. There's one small house on there with a garage, can you hear me?
Nope.
They're pretty small. The ones on the west side are a little bit bigger. It is a drainage facility, it's in a floodway. It would take some, a little bit of effort and money to build a backup. One point something out on Acacia, that's, those are not suitable, real suitable places to build houses. That's what we call, that's Gobi Desert, that's sand out there, so it's not a real good area to build out in, far area anyways.
What'd you say, relatively small, are they 50 by 100, or 25 by 100?
Some are 25, some are 50.
The ones on the very left are 50, and if you look in the middle, you can see those little 25 by 100 above it.
Right. Just wanted it on the record. Okay. Councilor Robert, does anyone have a comment?
Yeah, Paul Beckover, Boxwood, Steph, the ones with the sand and sand. Now, would your backyard more, because it is all sand and it's almost unbuildable for housing, is that a possibility for something like a BMX bike area? Is that big enough for something like that? Because, you know, we're looking for something, well, I'm looking for something for a BMX bike.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's sand, it's sand, so it moves all the time, there's definitely you can put in sand to stabilize it. Yeah, technically, you could. I think, I don't know, we have never tried to build anything in sand before. I know there's a few houses there that, there is no sewer out there, so they're all on septic systems. And they, they fight it, they fight it a little bit.
Well, there are some references, but I'm not building a house on sand.
Yeah.
What's a use that can be done, honestly?
You see on rails?
Councilor Bruce Lohr.
No, I was just saying, is that something that we could research to see, like, what type of either BMXing, or that's not capable, or something else could we do with that sand lot, that's more like a park area for the kids? I'm just looking for someplace where for these BMXers, do you get them off the skate park? So that becomes just the skate park again, get the BMXers out on some of these properties that maybe we can't build on, but if we can put a BMX bike, you know?
That's something we can look into, we can also take that to the planning commission, and are they, are they...
Great. Okay, we'll make sure I get it, we've done, Councilor Spatia, you have a comment?
Yeah, I've always looked at 36th Avenue as the perfect place for a park. And I know that on the upper left, so I guess that would be the most northwestern lot, there are laterals and water already available on those lots, after talking to the county and to the Napa Water Company. But across the street from that, that large stretch, in my mind, I see a nice little leisure walkway that can be built to help with making circles of sorts, so kids can ride their bikes in a circle, or people can walk in a circle. And with that size, we would be able to make events happen in the avenues, which would, again, enrich that community a whole lot with something that they need, they're able to...
It was to open grass areas.
Exactly. We don't want to go...
High-tech.
High-tech.
The area grows more in there.
And, yes. And so then I'm looking at...
But then, that is a drainage, so we'd have to...
We don't do events in winter.
I didn't want to watch our infrastructure, our investment wash away.
And, no, and I've seen parks that are flood zones, that are beautiful during summer and spring, and don't get used during the winter or late fall, and it's like that.
The city has, they have their big events during summertime, and then it floods during winter.
And Mr. Becknell, you want to say something?
Yeah, talking about the 36th Avenue, when you think about the lots, and don't get misdirected by my presentation, keep in mind, on 36th Avenue and that stretch, we own the street, too. So, correct, you could knock that street off, and make that whole area in there a park in that parking lot either end. So, I mean, there are a lot of different ways of...
A lot of configurations that are possible here. I'm looking at 35th Avenue, I think that is a beautiful-looking parcel, and I think we should sell that to have a developer to develop a home. I think that is a perfect opportunity for a nice, beautiful home. I'm looking at the old Highway 53, 6145, that one almost should be similar to the stretch near Pine and Olympic, because there's a creek that goes right through that area, so I don't think there's anything that can be done, other than maybe helping it to be a little walkway of sorts to enjoy the nature.
Well, you own space.
There's high residential, with the apartment complex and the community right there, too, and they might be able to do something if it was connected.
Maybe that could be a little dog park, too, for it there, again, because I know that a lot of the sewers over there have little labs for company and stuff, and it was perfectly a park, dogs are allowed in.
Just for my clarification, we would have to purchase that from our redevelopment, and then turn it into that park.
That's why I was trying to think of ways that some of us can manage that. And improve our housing stock.
They're buildable lots, I'd say sell them unless somebody builds them, but I have a feeling the reason why we have these is because they're not buildable lots.
Well, as time has gone on, maybe the, that house, for example, they might want to go with a joint effort with those housing areas for more mobility for the residents, or more open area for the residents.
If we acquired them over time, just like the last few that came before as we decline, I think for a long period of time, things were being declined, and they were just being accepted and being said, "Yes." It's no strategy, so.
All right. We have to open this up here for public comment, is everyone? Okay, I'd like to open this up for public comment.
Thank you. I actually live on the property, I have to take Acacia home and pass that property. And one of the big issues with Pomona School there is the, when people come to drop off kids, there's no flow of traffic. You get on Acacia Street, and there's that one little section where cars have to turn around, they're constantly parking on the street, and the dust coming from there, that whole area. And looking at those properties, if you go past someone's house, that could easily turn, flow the traffic back through. I know that's an issue, and that's an issue that the school's been brought up, and I know that's the reason why they've been buying property behind the school. But that seems like a property right there that could easily be a functional, keep them flowing, keep children safe.
Thank you for your comment. Boxwood. So how many of the lots are suitable to build on, and can they be sold? I'm thinking, well, I donated a lot on 13th Street to Habitat Humanities, to put a nice house up there. And there's a family living in it that moved into it originally, and they are overjoyed. And that might be something we could do to get some more residents, and let somebody else build houses.
Good point.
All right, I've got my list. To start out with, a lot of those, a lot of the lots were donated lots to the city, and there was a time that we were looking at tax-default properties, and of course, we get really per shot at them if we want them, and some of those were picked up. And with the thought in mind to be able to donate into something like Habitat Humanities to fill our, to use our money on through redevelopment, to put lower-income housing or something on. So there was a lot of ideas, and we did accept a lot of lots, whether they were buildable or not. And as far as the 36th property, you guys are right on, that's exactly what that was looked at to do, was to make that into a park years ago. The drainage was an issue, but like Chris said, it was looked at to just abandon that street. You do have a couple of people that do use that street when it's not flooded, but it is flooded. So, you know, that's, that's sort of what that was, how that was looked at. If you look at your map, the top left-hand property is about, I scaled it out back there just as I could, my pen is a scale. But the top left property is 150 by 100. The one to the right of that is about 100 by 200. The low one below is about 100 by 150, or 100 by 550. So that's a pretty good strip along there. The Lector Drive property, 13061, there's a number of those around, those were always meant to be access points for people with a lake that live across the street. There's a number of them all over the county. A lot out toward Pinedale, there's a boat launch toward our house for us that, you know, was made into a boat launch, but it was for public access. Two houses or two lots down from me is another 10-foot strip, that goes from Monterey Drive all over the lake. It was, those pieces were meant for access, so I encourage you not to use it, they're for public access, and, you know, really for good use. The 29 acres was looked at for development at one point, talked about it for the athletic field. And the reason that one is so perfect for an athletic field, you can have a little bit of a battle with neighbors, but to do a Field of Dreams, I don't know if you've ever been at a Field of Dreams, but they have a main area in the middle, all the diamonds back up to that main area, and a lot of times, there's a full-blown restaurant right in the middle, that operates all the time, whether fields are being used or not. So that was an idea. We looked at that on a piece of Bill Wilder's property, not Bill Wilder, David James's property, out by Pond Road, we looked at it out there, and to incorporate sewer treatment pond area into a Field of Dreams also, out that way. And, you know, if you do the Field of Dreams concept, there's one in Ready, if you've ever been there, but they're gorgeous, they're fantastic, but it does generate a lot of traffic, and that's where you're going to have kind of a neighborhood problem in that area. I know some people will eat the charge right now, because we dealt with the 29 acres being sold as a, as a residential area that was a little more dense than they wanted it, so you'd have to be prepared for that one. The Austin Park property, and I wish that the field was still up there, but the Austin Park property, the strip that is this side of the beach, and the strip that went along the lake, the city-owned property, but you can't do anything with it, because it was picked up, as far as I know, with FEMA money, because it was all flood-prone property. Now, if and when you sold a piece of property that buildings on, there's nothing wrong with being able to put parking lots on that flood-prone property, or you could even do boating area, as long as it can flood in the wintertime. So that a person that bought that property that you could sell, could use that property as parking, or you could lease it to them, or whatever, but it's got a, you know, it was bought with FEMA money for flood-prone property, so I don't think there's, you can't sell it. I guess unless you paid the money you received from FEMA back. So, yeah, I'm not sure how that would work, but you need to look into that. You guys hit the nail on the head, too, with the Olympic Drive and Locust piece, it's a perfect little piece with Curb and Gutter right in front of it, to make it into a little, almost a pocket park, place where you have benches right along the creek there, and nice, and the way it sits, when the sun's, afternoon sun never hits that. You know, there's all kinds of shade trees and everything else around there. So, that's the notes I could make while I was sitting back here. Let me bear witness, I missed it, there was a couple of comments I haven't read through real quick. We definitely looked at, as you talked about relocating the ballfields and doing something down there. One thing I would hate to see was mentioned in RV parks. We have RV parks, why take away that business from the people that can do RV parks? They've just sunk a lot of money into Clear Lake Resort, which I think is going to be used for a lot of RVs at this point. I don't know if you've been through there lately, I go through there about once a week to see how they're doing with the FEMA housing and stuff, and they're pouring paths, speaking in those spots for RVs. And as far as bass fishing RVs, you know, with someone called with that years ago, if you go to any of the bass tournaments, you may see two motorhomes pulling a bass boat. The rest of them stay in local motels, eat at local restaurants and everything else. So that was Roy, our late Roy Simons, that was one of those big deals that you say, "But they're all pulling, you know, they all have RVs when they come into town, they don't even spend a dime in town, they're staying in their RVs." So I took him down there one day during a big bass tournament, I says, "Count the RVs, how many is here?" "Two." You know, and most of those guys would go to, on time RV park and stay, or go to a resort. So a lot of the properties are not useful, would be good to contact a next-door neighbor and say, "Hey, you want to buy this lot next door to you?" You know, so nobody can build on it, nobody can build on it anyway. That's about all I have to share with you now, but it's, it always, I guess, it always amazes me seeing I've been involved for so long, and, you know, the same idea's been going on for years, as far as some of this stuff. And then some of the, some of the historical knowledge has been lost because of, you know, like the FEMA program.
I thought that was for the beginning of that sidewalk that was hopeful to go along the lake.
Oh, the Romanade.
The Romanade.
Yeah. Well, that was, it was, if you look on it, all that property is below a certain elevation, and that's how the line got drawn, was it's below that flood-prone elevation. So, anyway, I'm always, if you need hysterical knowledge, I'm always here to have it.
Hysterical.
Yes, it is, in fact, I can just...
Are you going to auction the property off, or put it with the real estate people?
That's what we're discussing now, Mr. Shields, trying to determine what we're going to do.
Can I give a list of the property that you're going to liquidate?
We haven't decided whether we do that, but absolutely you can. We haven't decided whether we do that, but absolutely you can. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Councilmember Spatia, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask either City Manager Folsom or Finance Director, Mr. Becknell, the question that Mr. Shields just came with. If we sell it, we don't get to choose whether it's an option or if it goes to real estate, do we?
Well, it is that the city, we have a policy for the city. The city has a disposition of real estate policy, which I have not read, so I don't know the answer to that question. With regard to the redevelopment property, we can do an auction process if we want, or list it with a real estate broker. If you decide to list with a real estate broker, whatever the sale price is, it's going to have to pass muster with the Department of Finance, and they're typically going to want some sort of appraisal of the property. With the auction, they're less concerned about that.
Thank you very much for the response.
I have a question about Crawford. Can you give me some description of what that cul-de-sac looks like, what's there? Because all I see on this map right now is just that edge and then Highway 53. Wondering what else surrounds that area? In the very, in the very area that we're looking at, like just 200 feet, 500 feet away? Crawford is right here. No, I want to know what's further down Crawford Avenue, like how much further down until we reach normal residential area and stuff like that?
That property, that's one all the way up to, that's our 53?
Pretty much.
Yeah. It's a couple hundred yards.
Couple hundred yards. Just putting it out there, we have people who are looking to help us with our home lift situation, and if that's a remote location, is that a decent location to utilize? Or, I mean, if we don't take care of it, wouldn't it go remain? And so is this a location that looks like something that would be suitable for that, or no? And I'm not sure.
I would say suitable, I guess I'm needing a definition. I don't believe that water or sewer.
Gotcha.
And I would not want to.
No, and we need amenities?
We would need to have that.
And do we, do we know we're sure that that is the case, or?
I don't believe it's developed, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
What is that, that it rides, the street goes all the way out into this circle that's like some?
There's, there's two creeks that come through there, so I don't have the picture in front of me.
I believe what that was, prior to the expansion of Highway 53, that was where it came across 53. But when 53 was widened, they made it a cul-de-sac.
Because if there's nothing for us to do there, then I would say we put that one on the selling block. And I'm looking at the Pine Fur and 40th, whatever that is on the upper left, it looks like, almost like a tag rather than actual, it's property. And the one that crosses the road, I don't even know if we can sell that because of the situation in the road. But those areas look like, and the one, 40th or Fur, I'm not quite sure which one this is, the one that looks like a big T, sideways T, that one would also be a great location for somebody to build a nice home. Looks like a fairly large and decent property, as long as the amenities are there. But since there's residential area across the street, it looks like that would be there.
I agree. Fortunately, I don't think, you know, we're under any timeframe frames for any of this. I think we've had a pretty spirited discussion, but as we're approaching 25 after nine, we still have a couple items that to discuss. Is there any other issues that we want to get to have in both directions? I think staff, at least from my perspective, Mr. Folsom, you might look for consensus. Do you feel we've given you ample ideas for each of these items that you presented to us?
Yes, we'll flesh that out further and be back to you and be back to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
The question is, while we're looking over these properties, I know some of them may not have amenities, but they may be on the side of the road and stuff. You know, we have these tiny houses that they are looking for property that they might be able to set up a small little village. Being we're doing our general plan, if one of those properties would be suitable, would that be also a time that we might want to make changes or not?
Well, we'd want to look at it. You know, we're going to have to figure out what type of selling would be appropriate for those kinds of things.
I don't think I'll bring any of these properties, that's why I said essentially we're doing the general plan. I mean, maybe do an amendments if there's anything that.
I'll talk to our planner about that.
So I know that I get to have a look every time I've been in one of these properties, guys, but I don't see where, if we don't do something, that's just going to take you on, so. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so we have consensus?
Absolutely.
Thank you. May I move on to item 13? Good. No objections, I'm moving on. First reading of ordinance is 186-206, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake. Reinstating selected provisions in Chapter 9 of the Municipal Code by the President of the City of Clear Lake. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. We're getting our money's worth out of the Finance Director tonight, and I'll be asking.
He'll be turning that over to?
Yes, I will.
Haven't heard enough from me tonight. Back on February, back on February 11, 2007, the City Council at that time adopted the ordinance 133-2007. The effect of that ordinance was to repeal in its entirety Chapter 9 of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. We think the intent was not to repeal all of Chapter 9. The intent was to repeal only a portion of it. But nevertheless, the fact was, after doing some research, that all of it was repealed. Now, Sections 9-1 through 9-1.19 were reinstated, were made part of Chapter 9 at that point. But Sections 9-1.20 through 9-1.26 remained deleted. We would like to reinstall those in Chapter 9. Ironically, all these years, the Clear Lake Municipal Code has in fact reflected all of these sections in the code when in fact they were, sections that were there, they have been repealed. So we're not replacing all of Chapter 9. We're leaving the original change intact. We're putting in Sections 9-1.20 through 9-1.26, and Sections 9-3, which deals with building permits. Section 9-4, which dealt with the rental inspection ordinance, was inadvertently repealed back in 2007. We are not asking that that be put back into the code at this point because there are some modifications that we do want to make to the rental inspection ordinance before we put it back into effect. So we're asking you to adopt ordinance 186-2016 by title only. By title only, wait for the reading, scheduled for a second reading, April 14, 2016 meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Councilmember Spatia?
On Section 9-1-122 Board of Appeals, we would be creating a brand-new board, not using an already existing board and using them as a Board of Appeals, is that correct?
Correct.
And we would, we would follow the process we created? Okay, thank you.
Any comments from the council? I'd like to open this up for public comment. Any comments on this item, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll bring you back.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion? I would like to introduce ordinance 186-2016, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake reinstating selected provisions of Chapter 9 of the Municipal Code of the City of Clear Lake, and scheduled for second reading and adoption in the April 14, 2016 regularly scheduled, regularly scheduled council meeting.
Call second?
I have a motion in a second, how about a little call?
Councilmember Overtone?
Aye.
Councilmember Spatia?
Aye.
Councilmember Obersloh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Bertino?
Aye.
Mayor Perdón?
Aye. Thank you. Page 15.
May I ask a question before we begin? Is there a good likelihood that this will take longer than 30 minutes?
That's up to you guys. Our presentation can be five minutes, but depending upon how many questions you have.
Okay, I was just wanting to know if we should address the extension of time, a motion now, or wait and see how goes?
We stay there till quarter till?
Yes.
As you may remember, on November 17 of 2015, the City Council and the Planning Commission held a joint meeting to review the draft master plan for Highlands Park and provided feedback to the consultant for preparation of the final master plan. So the Foothill Associates came here, they described the draft plan, which was very similar to this, and got comment from both the Planning Commission, from the public and the City Council. They went back, they made a number of different changes. And this is, in effect, the final draft for you now. Primarily the changes that were made, the most significant changes anyway, were that the restrooms, and I apologize if it's difficult to see this. Chris? Do you have that pointer? So in the original draft, the restrooms were located right about this area. And there was a lot of comment from both the Planning Commission, the public and the City Council that with the activities being over here, this being the horseshoe pits and this being the bocce ball, that really, and for the most part, the folks that would be using that would be more senior citizens, most likely, that it's probably a long way to walk from there to there, especially if you really need to use restroom. So the suggestion was made that the restroom be located in a more centralized location. So this is where it's been relocated. So that was one of the major changes. Also, this area here, there wasn't really parking in the original draft. We have, the consultant has added a little bit additional parking in here to support the visitor center. This is what will be the chamber in visitor's center. This was in the original, this is a large gazebo. This is kind of a medium gazebo that would also be where entertainment could be held. So that, the draft was located right here. We've also expanded the bocce ball to two courts, whereas if it was one before. And I believe, Doug, help me out here, I believe those were the major changes.
Those were the, yeah, those were the three major changes.
What was the decision on the docks, like we had talked about elevated boat docks?
Well, in the original draft, this here was going to be like a pier from, we talked about how the city actually owns some docks, some floating docks that would be cranked up, that was relocated from Thompson Harbor, they're no longer there, we're restoring those, that if in the future we decide to put some out there, that we put them, those docks out there rather than going out and purchasing or building new docks.
So that's still available?
Right. So essentially, those were the major changes. This is the final draft for your consideration?
Very good, thank you.
Did the lights in the background?
I think the plan is terrific. It invigils a lot of community input and creates something that will fill a need. We don't currently have that kind of level of service here, and I'm excited about that. Now let's find some money.
Open it up for public comment. Public comment, yes, sir?
I've been, I've been interested in this park development for some time, and not just because it's right across the street from the Donut Store. But I think, I think the plan that you've come up with is really nice. The one thought that I, one interest I've had, being part of the art community in town, is that this park amongst the other three really would lend itself best to something like an annual art festival that should be an outdoor event, set up in various places where you could display art. And it would be easily fenced off to control access, maybe charge an admission so we could pay the city for its use. And, and so, and I think that, you know, it's hard to judge the size of those open areas. I mean, you have an area up front that's designated as native plant communities, and we wouldn't be trouncing all of that. But the Grassy area and the Plaza area, all that would lend itself really well to something like that. We don't have anything like that in the county at this point. The Echo Art Show that goes on down in Middletown is a big attraction, but that county park's pretty decimated. The county's going to work on it, and that show's going to go forward this year. But I love this plan. And I hope that the city keeps in mind that the Wasita property is right there where all those words are, and that that would be a perfect extension of this park. And hopefully, how the planners have allowed for that, have some vision for how that might be able to be utilized once the litigation is over on Wasita.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other for public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Discussion? Discussion?
I'm ready to accept the final master plan if there's no further discussion. That looks like maybe there is one.
Sorry, guys, I will not make this go past till 10 o'clock. I just have one quick question because I don't see it in the tier of one option or tier two option. And I don't know if it's just not a detail that is involved in this, but this looks beautiful. What is our security for keeping this park from being vandalized? I don't see cameras in the tier one, I don't see security involved in this. And I would love for our park to remain looking beautiful without being vandalized, like we've had with our bathrooms and stuff like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, as you know, we've been having security problems with our existing parks, restrooms and such. Just one of the things that we're looking into are various security systems. The county has done something recently, we're going to be meeting with them next week to get more information on what they've done. We've also found out something about, something we, the Public Works Director and I think is a pretty interesting idea, something called a flash cam, which has, it takes, it's motion sensors that take pictures. It flashes, it voices a warning that we've taken your picture, so if damage, I don't know, I paraphrase it. But if damage is done, we have your picture. So that's something that we're looking into, we're looking into that for restrooms as well.
Okay, so the security will be separate, separately taken care of based on just?
Well, we'll be upgraded from park to track.
During the architectural design.
Because that's my only worry about making such a beautiful park, is that I don't want us to lose and spend money in ways that gets destroyed.
Plan on that, lighten her up.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you.
Comments?
I will, we accept the final master plan for Highlands Park.
Have a motion in a second, can I have a little poll up?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Spatie?
Aye.
Councilmember Obersloh?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Fortino Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Perdón?
Aye, thank you very much. I held up on one item, I'd like to bring it back now, under presentations, I wanted to make sure she didn't take her prize and run out the door, because we still have business to attend to.
You're going to make her do one last, Council?
No, she is, but I thought I'd give her a chance to speak.
You're going to make me go.
I am, but first I'm going to make you step up to the podium, and I would like to invite your husband, I see he's out there somewhere, to come forward. He's been your partner in all this.
He in a beater. Dancing bear.
Whatever you want. You got more time on this job tonight. I would just like to thank Councilmember Sloane for all of her leadership, her kindness, her spirit. As mayor, she kept this entity under control in some turbulent times, and I appreciated watching that, as I was a hopeful council member candidate. And then, as I sat with her and in our spirited discussions on many different topics and things, she kept some pretty volatile meetings under control, and again, I appreciate her leadership. Her forward thinking and planning was just, it was necessary, but you didn't overdo it. You let people speak, and you let people conduct their business, and you were a good leader. I wish we could annex this property quickly, but I think your husband, who's standing next to you, that's what I want to do about you, had had some other thoughts. You know, the spouses, I like to include spouses, because they're a big part of us. You know, they give up time with their loved ones, so they could be here for city business, for city cleanups, for all the different ribbon cuttings and meetings and things that run late into the evening. And it's not for a whole lot, other than just the spirit of wanting to do and help for your community. I just want to, you know, for your other council members who have served with you for these past nearly four years, thank you from the deepest part of my heart for all you have done. I wish you all the success in the world, because you're inoxylated. Thank you so much.
I'm not good at this, but the people that I need to thank are my fellow teammates, each and every one of you. Gina, we've come a long ways with Joyce's guidance from afar and from before, and with Bruno and Russell's new addition to the council. I couldn't have been the mayor, or the council member, or the person without each and every one of you. And I couldn't have been this person without the community. You guys elected me in the highest capacity to serve, and I thank you, I really, really do thank you, and I hope I've served you well. Thank you.
Does everyone know why you're leaving?
I tried to say that last time, while I was leaving, and it didn't come out very well. So, why I'm leaving is, it's been a few years, my family's been wanting a little bit more space than in the heart of the community where we moved 15 years ago. Our family's getting smaller, our children are going away, and my husband has a lot of, he's built on the property that we've owned for 15 years, every little square inch of it, he's done something with, and I'm not exaggerating. So, it was time to be, have a quieter area, a little more room to be around and enjoy ourselves as our children went away. Did we think the property was outside the city limits, and we fell in love with it? No. The address said Clearlake, California, 95422, been on the market two days, we said, let's go look at it. Fell in love with it, and then it was like, literally, probably, Mr. Smith knows, like, he's checked it out 100 times, probably, about 200 yards probably out of the city limits, one property, maybe two at the most, outside the city limits. So, with that, came the decision of doing what is right. And I was, when I ran, I ran on honesty, transparency, and just doing the job from the bottom of your heart. So, what's right now is for me to resign. So, thank you.
Denise? Denise, can you hold your plaque for that camera? Hold the plaque for that camera. With Pete? You're part of the team, bro.
Thanks for your song, Dancing Bear. You have to be there.
You're going to want that picture.
Pete's nickname, Dancing Bear.
Greg? Please? All right, moving on, council member reports. Councilmember Overton? Councilmember Overton passes. Councilmember Spatie?
I'll speak for Overton, since we were in the same meeting together.
That's right, I figured I'll pass and let you talk.
We both went to the LACCO meeting, and it was held in Lakeport this time, and I think one of the biggest things that happened was we approved the solution of East Lake and West Lake Resource Conservation Districts, and made it become a current formation of Lake County Resource Conservation District, which made a lot of sense to bring those two districts together, so as to share resources all around the lake, rather than separating them into separate entities. We also sent a letter of support, we approved of sending a letter of support to the Cal LACCO board of directors, due to a lawsuit that would prohibit some of the actions that LACCO is, has been doing and is doing. And we don't want to be prohibited, we want to be able to have control over our local area and what we choose. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Sloane?
Well, I think I just said pretty much my life report right there, so I did meet with the city manager this week, and we've had another meeting, I can be of achieving now, I've been kind of taken back, so with that, I'll forego the rest of my report.
Thank you again for all your service. Let's move on to the speeches.
Mine's very short. This afternoon, I attended a leave legislative committee meeting by a telephone, banking technology, so that we could quickly approve a letter of support for AB 1923, which will be heard on the Senate floor, and presented by Senator Wood on the 30th. I spent a lot of time these last two weeks talking about garbage, at the solid waste committee meeting, and also at our universal garbage ad hoc committee. We've come to some very important decisions in that respect, and those will be coming forward to you shortly. And also met with the road committee, who's also come to some important decisions. We've got the marketing committee, and.
You might have course.
Forgot about that one. And I would just like to say in parting to our council member, it's been a heck of a journey, and I can't imagine having anyone else to have started this with, and I'm going to miss you. I thought I'd know you would.
You do, you do, and I'll always be there.
Boy, she's not a working woman.
Don't forget our.
I forgot the city manager report, I just.
I was going to make sure.
Do you speak to photographers?
Please, Mr. Folsom. Okay, I'll be quick, just a couple of things that I think are important.
I'm hurrying as the, our.
So, one of the goals for the City Council for this year was to have park signs and rules and regulations posted. We now have those signs made, they are a significant improvement to what you could see out in the parks, which are some really crummy looking signs. These are beautiful, done by a local person here in Clearlake, so we're very happy to show these off and to put these up in the parks. One other thing to tell you about is that there's two properties that are in the process of being demolished right now. One is at Emery, and one is on Palmer. They're being torn down, they've been blighted eyesores, and we're in rhythm. So, that can be my.
Thank you, I apologize for jumping out of order again. I'll close it with mine, unless there's any, any issues for consensus. Thank you again for your time. Went to the road ad hoc, I won't keep that up anymore with, just be excited, there's some good things coming. Our survey for what the city wants to do, city residents want to do with the roads, came out very positive, and we'll be moving forward with that plan through the road ad hoc and making recommendations to council soon, but it came out very positive for people who want action, want the roads fixed, and that's real encouragement. So, we'll bring that to you again. Do you now want to make your report? I jump around, so it's not.
What are we going to do with the city council position?
We pulled up. But something that was released this morning, our city police department has been very active these past few days. Lieutenant's gotten only about an hour or two sleep, I think, probably in the last three or four days, and I appreciate your service, but we need to recognize one of our locals, and I'd like to thank Councilmember Spatie for bringing this to my attention as I get toward the end of the night, I get tired. Would you like to make that recommendation?
I think that there's some recognition that needs to be made, and that's for Officer Franklin, who came to a fire on, I believe it was 39th and Phillips, found some injured residents that were on the porch, as well as a lady who was not able to come out of the house in the back. He went in, and from what I heard, over readings, saved the four lives, if I am correct.
Yes, he did have some action with that, and I have made a point to, on the agenda for future presentation regarding.
And I think that those are the types of deeds we need to recognize, because that's the type of work that our officers are doing for us in our community, not just that night, but every single night. They're there to serve us and to keep us safe, and we need to make sure and recognize those actions, rather than walk on like nothing happened. So, please pass the word to Officer Franklin. Thank you.
And with that, I believe we're going to adjourn before 10 o'clock.